Afternoon. I'd like to call this meeting to order for the afternoon of October 29th, 2019. And for those of you who are viewing this at home, I am not Sam Liccardo, so don't adjust your TV. I'd like to, at this point, introduce our invocator. Today's invocation will be delivered by Ida Price Middle School Clarinet Quartet. Councilmember Foley will tell us more.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. The four students performing today are clarinetists from the Ida Price Middle School Symphonic Band, the top band at Ida Price Middle School. The Ida Price Symphonic Band includes student musicians who have demonstrated remarkable musical talent. The Symphonic Band is just one musical group of the many outstanding bands and choirs that are a part of the Ida Price Music Department and Cambrian School District. Led by their excellent music director Catherine Lorgan, the Ida Price Symphonic Band has competed and won awards in many events, including last year's Veterans Day Parade and the Los Cadas Holiday Parade where they won first prize. I'd also like to acknowledge that Dr. Carrie Andrews, the superintendent of Cambrian School District, is present here to listen to her students. The clarinetists from the Ida Price Symphonic Band will now perform their rendition of "Here Comes the Sun" by The Beatles. Thank you so much. How many of you were actually singing the song in your heads?
Thank you. Now let's rise, if you're able, for the Pledge of Allegiance. I would now like to invite Councilmember Arenas to please join me at the podium, and we will present a proclamation to the Filipino-American History Month.
Good afternoon. So I'm inviting all my Kaibigan friends to come down here. Kaibigan is friend in Tagalog. We have a couple of organizations who are being represented here, and I think they're in a couple of our districts. So, good afternoon. Today is, we are commemorating Filipino-American History Month, and not only the history, but also how the Filipino culture and people have contributed to this wonderful city that we call San Jose and the United States. They arrived, I don't know if anybody knows this, except for the folks behind me, but they arrived, the first Filipinos arrived, October 18th, 1587. So that's 33 years before the pilgrims landed on Plymouth Rock in 1620. Filipino-Americans are the second-largest Asian-American group in the nation and the third-largest ethnic group in California after Latinos and African-Americans. District 8 and San Jose are home to a thriving Filipino-American community who have directly contributed to the vibrancy and inclusive spirit of our city. For generations, the contributions of the Filipino-American community have been integral, part of laborers and dedicated services to the armed services and shaped American society. Today, I'm honored to invite a coalition of Filipino organizations who each play an essential role in preserving and celebrating Filipino-American history. This year's Filipino-American History Month is, the theme is "Pani", Visionaries. So that's, this is why you're seeing a lot of women behind me. They're celebrating Filipina-American women and their contributions to history and the Filipino-Filipina-American community nationwide. I'm joined by Angel Sang Long, if she can step forward, from the Bayanihan Filipino-American Foundation, Michelle Amoros from our very own city of San Jose Employees Group called the Filipino-American City Employees, and Anne Regino from Filipino-Americans Coming Together in San Jose. I believe we also have Kevin Suarez from Lead Filipino. And I just wanted to say just a little bit about each of those organizations. Bayanihan Phil Foundation is a nonprofit organization that serves as a resource for the community. And Bayanihan, a Filipino word that means collective support, highlights the rich heritage and intersections of their culture. The Filipino-American City Employees, or Faces, and you've probably seen their face around our Filipino flag-raising, they're an organization of Filipino-Americans who've dedicated their careers to public service and serving the residents of the city of San Jose. Filipinos acting and communing together in San Jose, or FACT, is a collective of Filipino-American nonprofit organizations based in San Jose. So you may see just 10 to 12 people behind me, but they represent a whole community throughout San Jose. I am privileged to build community alongside with these fierce Filipina women leaders. Angel, Michelle, and Anne, would you like to each share a few words? And I believe we're limited to one minute. Come on down.
And it is by generation.
Yes. Actually, if you want a face.
I probably would like.
Yeah. I think we're a beautiful face.
Well, yeah, as I was saying, it was probably because of the three generations. Magandang hapon, or good afternoon. Bayanihan evokes coming together for the common good, as our council member said. So we, at the mainstream Filipino community, thank City Council, Mayor Liccardo, Vice Mayor Chappy Jones, and our very own CM Arenas for the focus on our history and culture. I honor it not for the deckhand that touched the soil three days in October where alleged Filipino soil was, alleged Mexican soil was touched by Filipino deckhand. What this occasion evokes for us, though, are the root causes, the resiliency and strength of the Filipino diaspora. Slowly within our city, county, and state, you, our friends, and even the Philams who grew up here, you have barely scratched the surface of understanding the nature of our roots and who we are. In acknowledging this proclamation for my community, I wish to honor hard-working folks like Clari Itliong, Philip Vera Cruz, the farmworkers movement, and even the waves of farmers in Hawaii, the waves of teachers, the waves of nurses and caregivers, and waves of professionals who came to the U.S. shores. Moving forward, we expand the celebration to a more, to the more redeeming social value beyond the claim of an incidental port call for three days. Salamat at mabuhay.
I don't think I have any more to say, but if you want to hear more information about, all those information about Itliong and Philip Vera Cruz, we do have all those books and videos at the library, so do come check those out. I do want to just quickly mention about Faces, though, that we definitely support a lot of these scholars that we have back home in the Philippines, but we also support those here in the community. Of course, last year, we did donate to the mayor's educational initiative, last year, here in our very own neighborhood, donating to the Career Online High School where there's several graduates at the rotunda, and some of us witnessed that. We also have done community outreach, and this coming Sunday, we will be doing, serving to about 180 sheltered community. Those are the things that we definitely make sure that we are reaching out to communities in need. And again, some of those not so much, but very little things that we do for our community is definitely something that some of us Filipinos, because it's the spirit of friendship and dedication that we try to do. And again, thank you, Arenas, and all our councils, and our mayor, and our city manager's office for supporting and dedicating to our community.
Hi, everyone. So my name is Kevin. Unfortunately, Anne wasn't able to make it, but I'll speak on her behalf. So first of all, I'd like to thank Councilmember Arenas, Mayor Liccardo, and San Jose City Council for this commendation for Filipino-American History Month. The first Filipino set foot, as was told earlier, in Morro Bay in 1587, and our community started labor movement and worked alongside folks such as Cesar Chavez. Another thing that isn't mentioned is many of our veterans fought alongside U.S. soldiers in World War II and were unjustly, did not receive benefits that they were promised. And only two years ago, they were given the Medal of Honor by Congress. So this, this is a reminder that we always have to fight for justice, and I want to thank everyone here in the community who has done that so far. And also to bring to light the organization that Anne works for, FACT, and that the organization I work for, Lead Filipino, we work in conjunction to uplift our community and most recently went up to Sacramento to help pass several thousand dollars for the Domestic Workers Program to help domestic workers who are abused. So our organization does a lot of work with advocacy, with education, and with providing access to mentors and to a larger community network. So for that, thank you so much, Mayor Liccardo and San Jose City Council.
I now would like to invite John Mendez to come down. It's my absolute honor to present this commendation to John Mendez, a longtime member and president of the Advisory Council at the Cypress Senior Center. John is heavily involved at the Cypress community and senior center and has created several senior classes of his own, including Zumba Gold and English as a Second Language, or ESL. Not only has this increased the participation of seniors, it has also established an interest in more classes being created. John is a dedicated volunteer worker who's demonstrated his passion and commitment by always making himself available for the needs of his community. If a senior needs help with transportation to the community center, John always offers to pick them up. It is an understatement to say that John goes above and beyond for his community. John frequently visits senior veterans in the hospital and ensures that each veteran is helped with their own medical benefits. John's exceptional work and positive words have proved him to be a supporter and friend to our senior community and have demonstrated his continued support in promoting and improving our community center. John is a true pillar of the community, and I'm sure he will continue to do great things for the seniors, the veterans, and the Cypress community and senior center. On behalf of Mayor Sam Liccardo and my council colleagues, I present you, John, with the commendation for your outstanding achievement in support of the Cypress Senior Center, and I'm going to ask you to say a few words.
I'm not wanting to say a lot, a lot, but to, for our seniors in the center, everybody that's there, and all the volunteers are the ones that make that center shine. All those millions of little things that happen that nobody notices because they don't get the spotlight that you guys have given me. So I thank you all that's at the senior center that helps out every day and goes unnoticed, but it doesn't go unnoticed with me. Thank you.
All right, we're on to orders of the day. Does anyone on the council have any changes to the printed agenda? If not, can I get a motion, please? All right, it's been moved and seconded. Okay, so I need to make a change to the orders of the day. So the maker of the motion, if they can modify to make, move item 9.1 to follow consent. All right. And that's okay with the seconded? All right. It's been moved and seconded, let's vote.
I'm still waiting. I'm still waiting on votes. As a note, the system will reflect Councilmember, Vice Mayor Jones's vote as Liccardo. Wait, no, they switched you. That's the first time they've done it right. I don't need to make that announcement, sorry.
Okay. Good news. All right, closed session report. City Attorney?
The council made it closed session, but there isn't a report.
Thank you. Next to the consent calendar, are there any items that the council wants to pull from the consent calendar?
Vice Mayor, I would like to recuse myself from item 2.17 and pull item 2.9 and 2.10.
Okay, are there any other items that my colleagues want to pull? If not, let's approve the remainder of the consent calendar. Can I get a motion, please? All right, it's been moved and seconded, let's vote. Sure. Okay, we're going to start with item 217. Councilmember Camas had to recuse himself, so can I get a motion to approve 217, please? Okay, it's been moved and seconded, let's vote on that item.
Councilmember Arenas?
Okay. So Councilmember Camas, you wanted us to pull 2.9 and 2.10. We have a couple of speakers for both items. Would you prefer the speakers to go first, or?
Why don't I start this and then let the speakers go first? I just want to give a heads up to everybody. First, I want to thank Nicole Burnham, Michael Ogilvy, and Anne Grabowski from PRNS, the Office of Cultural Affairs, and our library system. Also want to thank our Parks Commission, the Arts Commission, and Library Commission for their questions and concerns and reviewing the proposal that we have here today. This is a special honor for our community and for me. Pat was not just a predecessor to me, she was a mentor. Her leadership brought us the combined Almeden Community Cultural Center and Library. Her advocacy built, helped to build the Shark Tank, and her strong work ethic is still being talked about in my district today. A group of friends and family lovingly called the Pat Dando Brigade are here in the audience who work tirelessly with my office and thousands of residents on a way to honor Pat's memory, and which we're voting on today. They settled on a statue and an endowment gift to the libraries. They set a goal for $350,000, and they raised over $440,000. And no, they didn't get any money from the city of San Jose and didn't ask. The endowment will fund, maintenance, and it'll fund, will be used to provide programs at the libraries and services for children for many years to come. And I'm very proud of this group and their efforts and their hard work and patience with all the bureaucracy that they had to jump through to get this done. I would like now to have them speak on this issue, please.
Okay, I'd like to invite Rich Crowley and Cheryl Stroh to come up and say a few words.
Vice Mayor Jones and council members, I want to thank the city staff, too, for putting together an excellent memo regarding the Pat Dando monument. Please travel with me a few years back when Pat first began to do long-term impact projects for Almeden Valley. In the early 80s, I received a call from, one evening, from someone named Pat. She had a project she thought I might be interested in supporting. Instead of asking for money, she asked for my time as volunteer for the Almeden Valley Youth Counseling Service. She said, at that time, it wouldn't take a lot of time, so I jumped at the opportunity. Well, what happened next was nothing short of phenomenal. You see, Pat had co-founded this nonprofit as a result of a loss of counselors at our local schools and an eventual teen suicide. When I joined her group, there was only one professional counselor and two interns working in a small office and a shared conference room. Her idea was to step into the void and make low- and no-cost counseling services available to all kids and families throughout Almeden. She assembled a team of highly motivated volunteers and made it work without government subsidies. As a result of past vision and her team's hard work, that same lowly nonprofit today has a huge suite of offices where they provide those low- and no-cost one-on-one counseling sessions, in addition to parent and growth classes and on-campus student counseling to more than 30 local schools as the Almeden Valley Counseling Service. Her impact continues to be gigantic, but that was Pat. Her motto was always, "Go big or go home." Thank you all very much for your consideration and your vote in favor of the monument.
Thank you, Rich.
Good afternoon, I'm Cheryl Stroh. I met Pat in 1974. We were both new to California and to San Jose, and a little bit homesick, actually. Our children were attending Henderson Elementary School, and Pat was always passionate about education and the role parents can play in supporting the school, its teachers, and thus enhancing our children's educational experiences. She had many ideas for our school, always a plan to carry them out. Her leadership style was kind but firm, open to others' ideas and suggestions all the time, and was right there, working alongside all of the volunteers to see a project to its conclusion. Under her leadership, Henderson PTA did a lot of good projects, but two that stand out to me was the Friendship Garden that we built so that our children would have some place to play and chat other than on an asphalt surface of the playground. We also created a student-designed tile mural that chronicled all the activities at Henderson, each tile laid by a teacher, a student, or a parent. This mural still enhances the courtyard at what is now Almeden Country School. After Henderson closed in 1989, Pat continued her efforts with Bret Hart and Leland. She was instrumental in working with San Jose Unified to reinstate the Sixth Period Day, and we eliminated the smoking section at Leland High School. Under her leadership, our community raised the funds to replace the dirt and cigarette stubs along Camden Avenue with nice green grass, and we wore shirts that said, "Leland is beautiful because of me." These are but a few of the projects Pat helped organize. Although each was different, they all had one common thread: community, working together. Everyone had a part, everyone did their part, and the community benefited in every way. Our friendship, sorry, and our volunteer efforts continued for 45 years. I've been honored to work on this committee to try to find a lasting memorial for Pat Dando in Almeden Valley, the place she got her start and the place she loved so much. I feel that this sculpture is a perfect choice, and I encourage your support. As our artist always has told us, every sculpture tells a story, and Pat's story is definitely worth telling and worth remembering. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'd be honored to make the motion to approve the staff memo.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, let's vote. Okay. Pam and then Magnalena, I need to...
Thank you. First, I wanted to acknowledge that Bob Dando is in the audience. Thank you for coming. And I wanted to just make this brief comment. The two speakers tremendously encapsulated the personality that is Pat, but I wanted to bring up something else that hasn't been mentioned, and that Pat was a master at bringing together different ideologies regardless of the issue, just to make sure that the issue was one that would improve was one that would improve the lives of those in her community and in San Jose. So even though she was a staunch Republican, she was so willing and able to work successfully with everyone regardless of their political philosophy, and I just wanted to share that and encourage us all to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Councilmember Carrasco.
Thank you, Councilmember Foley, for bringing that up. Actually, I just wanted to mention that I had, I think, an unusual relationship with Pat. I was very new to the political scene when I met Pat Dando and had what I consider a very valuable relationship with her in my political formation. And believe it or not, it's her, actually, her belief in me and her faith in me is what propelled me to be here, interestingly enough. And so when I started, very few people actually supported me, but it was Pat who rallied people around me and who, and she was instrumental in raising money and helping me get to a place of political viability, if you will. And so she was really tough on me. We had great conversations, but I really appreciated that she tested me, she pushed me. And what I appreciated about that relationship is that, as Councilmember Foley pointed out, she was a staunch Republican, and she was very clear that we probably wouldn't agree on a lot of things, but she understood that I was, she believed I was a person of integrity and I was going to, you know, fight the good fight, at least, you know, from my ideologies. So it was with great sadness when I learned about her passing, and I'm glad that all of you are here and making sure that her memory stays alive, because regardless of our ideologies, black, white, brown, or what side of the city we live in, I think that when you sow seeds of goodwill, they manifest themselves. And so they manifested themselves in who I am today. And I'm very grateful for Pat's faith in me, especially 10 years ago. And I wanted to make sure that all of you know the relationship I had with Pat and how much I really, really appreciate it, who Pat was and how she extended herself to me. Thank you so much for the work that you've done in making sure that her legacy is remembered.
Thank you, Councilmember Carrasco. Councilmember Depp.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So it was mentioned earlier by two councilmembers how what a staunch Republican Pat Dando was, but I think I clicked the button just to point out that she was never an ideologue. And, you know, she's been off the council for some time, but her reach extends as far as to even me, who, you know, is not as new as Councilmember Jimenez, but still relatively new. So when I ran the first time, you know, Pat Dando was one of the people that I found myself having coffee with, and we had discussions about the political climate and San Jose politics, and she, you know, lent me her time, her checkbook in her ear, and let me bounce ideas off her. And I wouldn't go so far as to assume that she was a mentor, but we did have discussions, and I learned a lot from her, and that's the type of person she was. So staunch or not, she was not an ideologue. She was always willing to work in the best interest of the community, and she was a pragmatic politician and someone who cared about San Jose and, you know, the residents here very much to the very end. So I just wanted to get that on the record, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Depp. And I just want to echo those sentiments. Pat was a treasure to the community and someone who loved the City of San Jose, and she'll be missed. We have a motion in a second, so let's vote.
Now I'm gonna make the announcement that your vote, that Vice Mayor Jones's vote will reflect as Mayor Licardo, and this is so he can see who's requested to speak.
Thank you, Tony. All right, on to item 210. Councilmember Camas, did you want to tee that off?
Is there a public comment on this?
Quite a few.
Let them go first, thanks.
Okay. I'd like to ask Suzanne Emerson, Aiden Singer, Diane Bailey, and Karen Nelson to come to the podium.
Good afternoon, my name is Suzanne Emerson. I'm a green building consultant, and I'm super excited that you guys are considering going all-electric for San Jose. At the last meeting when you guys discussed this, there was a question raised about the cost-effectiveness for small construction projects, especially ADUs. I've worked on a bunch of ADUs. I have a client who only builds ADUs and sheds, and so I asked them their feedback on that question. And what they said is it absolutely does reduce costs for them to go all-electric. Oftentimes, they have to replace the service panel on the main house, bring it up to 200 amps, in order to provide the amount of electricity they would need for an all-electric ADU, but that cost still costs less than the cost of tying into the natural gas line. Where they had some hesitation was on having to put aside this much space for a tank, which is what you have to do when you go with a tankless water heater. Currently, there are products available on the international markets, tankless water heaters that are small and can be wall-mounted. I understand some are going through the UL testing process right now, and we'll see them on the U.S. market, but they're not here yet. So right now, what we're seeing for all-electric ADUs is an exterior closet with a tank of water heater with your heat pump water heater in it. The other question, the other concern they had was if an ADU was not planning to have, if they were planning on not having people living as residents in an ADU, they were concerned about the standby losses for heating water 24/7 for some, a building where somebody might not be taking a shower for six months. And the answer to that is the vacation mode button on the heat pump water heater. You just push the off button, and then as soon as you find out your in-laws are coming to town and they're gonna be staying in there, then you push the on button again. So simple, low cost, and it absolutely is cost-effective. Thank you.
Adam Singer for the record. Please excuse my handwriting.
Sorry.
I'm here from the Sunrise Movement and for the Rising Generation on account of the, everything related to climate and the way that we're trying to be more responsible with the way that we use and obtain energy. And I was here at the meeting last time with a poster of signatures from 49 people who are concerned but were and today still are in school, or some of those would be here to speak as well. And we're very passionately concerned about the issue and heartened by the vote last time and are here because we still care. So thank you, and we'll look forward to all this.
Thank you.
Many thanks to the council for the opportunity to allow me to speak for my organization, which is the Climate Reality Project, Santa Clara County. I think you all know this, but buildings are the second-largest source of greenhouse gas emissions because we use methane, otherwise known as natural gas, which is a very powerful greenhouse gas. San Jose recently declared a climate emergency, and that was an important step to deal with with the emergency we face. And the step that you took in September to decarbonize new buildings to avoid emitting climate-destroying methane gas is, remains an issue that you can deal with today. Right now, this is one of the most valuable steps we can take to reduce our city's greenhouse gas emissions and to protect residents' health, safety, and seize the opportunity to reduce the huge cost that result by waiting. Now is the time. With only 11 years left to dramatically accelerate the transition away from dirty fossil fuels to clean renewable energy, now is not the time to delay. You've demonstrated that you care about climate change and you understand the challenge we face. Please continue to demonstrate your leadership today and set an example for all the other cities across the country to follow by adopting your suggested policy for all-electric, no-gas construction. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name's Diane Bailey. I'm director of Menlo Spark, a local climate organization aimed at a zero-carbon future for our region and also a member of the Fossil Free Campaign for Silicon Valley. And I really want to thank you for your action last month to adopt the REACH codes for clean energy, new construction. And I think that this next step to look at prohibiting natural gas in new homes, ADUs, small apartments, and government facilities is really a critical step. And I just want to correct a couple of the misconceptions that I've seen in some earlier comments. I want to note that electrical appliances, as it turns out, are five times more efficient than the newest, most efficient natural gas appliances, and the technology has really grown over the past few years and spread from other leaders in Japan and Germany, and it's also widely used here in the States, in the Southeast, cities like Miami, in the Pacific Northwest, and also Honolulu, where seeing the majority of new construction go all-electric. And we've actually been working with some design experts around the state to produce guidebooks on all-electric construction and put together examples of what the all-electric construction looks like and how the different projects are really saving money and leading to safer, healthier, more resilient homes and buildings for our communities. I also want to note that in this era of public safety power shutdowns, the newest natural gas appliances are actually electrically controlled, and that means that new homes with natural gas won't be able to run their furnaces or their water heaters if the power grid is down. And so I think that's really important to take note. However, if we build all-electric homes, we can create a much more resilient community because those homes go together with solar and battery energy storage for microgrids that make our communities more resilient during a power shutdown. I want to thank you for taking this bold action. San Jose can really be a leader around the nation, and we hope that you will take this action to prohibit natural gas in new construction. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to call up Linda Hutchins Knowles, Tahoe Rowe, Susan Butler Graham, and Susan Desjordan.
Hi, I brought my sign for my daughter. She couldn't come, but it says, "Kids deserve a fossil-free future." So my name is Linda Hutchins Knowles. As you probably know, I'm the co-founder of Mothers Out Front South Bay, a grassroots group that's recently grown to 1,500 supporters in every district of the city. We're here today first to thank you for your strong REACH code that you passed unanimously last month, and second, to express our enthusiasm for the two additional measures you promised to take then. Along with passing the REACH code last month, you also announced a declaration of a climate emergency. As is clear from the fires engulfing California, we are in a true climate emergency. In a climate emergency, you don't continue business as usual. You don't perpetuate the very practices that led to the emergency. You respond, as Greta Thunberg says, "As if your house is on fire," because it is. What do you do in a fire? You stop, drop, and roll. That's what we're asking you to do today, to stop, drop, and roll to protect our children's future, health, and safety. Stop building with natural gas. Climate-smart cities do not allow builders to use gas when there are cost-effective, more efficient, electric options available. It makes no sense to continue building with outdated technologies like fossil gas with one hand, while on the other you are encouraging residents to replace their old gas stoves and appliances with electric ones. So let's not build the past, let's build for the future. After you stop new gas construction, we'll also ask you to drop barriers to climate-smart actions, as you're doing with the Climate Smart San Jose Challenge, and to roll out incentives to support developers to choose all-electric buildings. We want you to know that we residents have your backs. You received 22 public letters in support, or 22 total letters about item 2.10, the two gas bans. Only one of them was opposed, that was a developer who denies climate science. 21 of them were in favor. The public unanimously, not unanimously, the public very enthusiastically wants you to support these measures. Don't be afraid of the wrong things, be afraid of the right things: climate destabilization, contaminated air quality, gas explosions, and rising gas prices. Our children are counting on you to use all the tools in your toolbox to protect them. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tahoe Rowe. I'm a high school student. I'm also representing Sam, Jamie, Yashni, Amelia, and Malika as our high school students. We participated in the San Jose Youth Climate Strike on September 20th outside of this city hall. As students, we live in uncertain times. I do not, we do not know whether we will be living in a safe world when we grow up, and if the recent fires are anything to say, then this means that climate change is not a backburner issue and is a crisis that has to be addressed now. San Jose is a city that has the power to fight against climate change and make significant progress in the fight for our future, not just because of its size, but because of its role as a leader for California and the country. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Susan Butler Graham with Mothers Out Front. As a resident of District 9, I'm here to thank you all for your leadership in this frightening time of climate change and to urge you to approve without delay the ordinance and policy to build without gas. Yes, this is a climate issue. After years of misleading branding of so-called "natural gas," most of us were tricked into believing that it was a cleaner alternative to other fossil fuels. It's what we're used to. But now we know better. We know that gas is dangerous and dirty. We've heard from developers who have built all-electric, and we know that in most cases it's a cheaper alternative. This is also an issue of equity. As a bilingual teacher for 29 years, I've worked with so many impoverished families. All parents want their kids to have the opportunity to live in safer homes with the clean air and lower energy bills that are possible with all-electric. Not dangerous, polluted, outdated buildings with skyrocketing gas bills and costly retrofits. As climate-exacerbated fires rage to the north and south of our valley, I urge you to plan for San Jose's future and lead the way along with so many other Bay Area cities. Please make San Jose the climate-smart example and approve the ordinance and policy to build without gas today. All our kids are counting on you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Susan Desjordan. I am a resident of District 6 in San Jose. I'm also a former, I guess, once an engineer, always an engineer, an engineer that worked in energy and environmental issues for 20 years, and the last 15 years as a high school science, chemistry, physics, and environmental science teacher. I'm also currently on the executive committee of the local Sierra Club and a member of Mothers Out Front. So, San Jose City Council members, please do not allow any more natural gas infrastructure to be built in any type of building in San Jose, eliminating greenhouse gas emissions, especially very potent methane and very dangerous and explosive methane, which leaks from all-natural gas piping systems, and carbon dioxide that results from combustion of natural gas. It's one of the most impactful ways that we can reduce greenhouse gases and climate change. And I want to thank the City Council of San Jose for starting up San Jose Clean Energy, for also embracing and investing in electrical vehicle infrastructure recently, and I think that San Jose can be a leader for big cities in reversing the impacts of climate change. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Deanna Percy, Ida Rose Sylvester, Y. Ann Trung, and Dushelle Leeds.
Hi, Vice Mayor Jones. I'm Deanna Percy. I wear many hats in the community, but today I come to you as my most important role, that as a mom and as a member of District 10 and as a member of Mothers Out Front, who also there's members of District 10 here. I wanted to share with you a letter to the editor that was published on Sunday in the Mercury News. I'm grateful to San Jose for backing the all-electric homes. Thanks for your climate leadership. As a 21-year resident of San Jose, I couldn't agree more that building codes that incentivize and require all-electric construction will benefit our entire community. Given that buildings are the second-highest source of emissions in our city, we have a huge opportunity to clean up our air and protect our climate by ensuring that new construction is powered with electricity rather than the outdated natural gas, which is largely made up of methane. I'm inspired by the benefits of using electricity rather than gas to power our buildings, including that it's better for our health, safer during natural disasters, much better for the climate, and more cost-effective in the long run. As a mother, I'm grateful for your leadership of the entire City Council and for supporting building electrification to protect our family's health and climate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Ida Rose Sylvester, Campaign Director for the Fossil Free Building of Silicon Valley, a coalition of nearly 30 groups working to decarbonize buildings in Santa Clara and San Mateo Counties. We ask you to adopt the gas prohibition ordinance today. Momentum is on the side of all-electric, fossil-free buildings. Last week, both Mountain View and Morgan Hill banned gas from new buildings, both citing San Jose among their inspirations. Many more cities are set to follow your example. Keep up your climate leadership, which started with Climate Smart and then extended to the declaration of a climate emergency and the adoption of REACH codes. Momentum is on your side. A minority of people will tell you stories trying to change your mind today, that electricity costs more. It does not, and in fact, with modern, incredibly efficient appliances, absolutely costs less. My brand-new heat pump water heater cost me one-third of what my only 10-year-old gas-water heater cost me to run. They will also tell you that the technology is not ready. We say it is. We have hundreds of case studies to back that up. And they will say that we need gas for resiliency. We do not. We need the self-sufficiency of solar plus battery and all-electric homes. Some may cite short-term issues, but keep your eye on the big picture of a climate-smart future. The future is here. Climate change is undeniable. It is real. We know fossil fuels already are anachronisms in our society. Your children are terrified. Your future selves and your children will thank you for doing all you can do now to protect them. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Y. Ann Trung. I'm a climate activist and resident of District 3. I am a member of Mothers Out Front, Mobilizing for a Livable Climate, and Silicon Valley Youth Climate Action. I was living in Santa Rosa when we experienced one of the worst, most destructive fires in history. Now the Kincaid Fire is raging in Sonoma County, which is still recovering from the last firestorm. This time, the evacuation area is many times larger, spreading all the way to the coast. We can't dither and delay the ban on natural gas in new buildings. Methane, the main ingredient of natural gas, is more than 30 times more potent a greenhouse gas than CO2. Our aging gas infrastructure is leaking methane. Last summer, a study found that U.S. oil and gas operations are leaking 60% more methane than the EPA had previously calculated. We cannot be adding more fossil fuel infrastructure. We are running out of time. If we don't reduce and remove carbon from the atmosphere, these fires, drought, food insecurity, homelessness, and many other problems are just going to get worse. On behalf of Silicon Valley Youth Climate Action, we ask you to do your part to save our future. Don't delay this action we must take. Buildings produce the second-largest emissions in San Jose after transportation. Fossil fuels are killing us, killing and killing the planet. You have the chance to speed us along to a clean-energy future and away from fossil fuels. Where cities lead, the state of California often follows. You could set the standard for the state, which in turn will inspire other cities and states across the nation and across the globe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Dushelle Leeds, and I'm a Conservation Assistant for the Sierra Club Loma Prieta Chapter. We are strongly in support of the proposed ordinance and resolution before you today. 2018 was the largest and deadliest wildfire season ever recorded in California. I live in a forest, and I can tell you that it's terrifying to step out of your home and to smell burning trees. This is something that's very personal to me. In September, we found out that the Earth's surface temperature is warming faster than we had even previously thought up to that point, and that our global plans for staying under 2 degrees Celsius no longer get us there. We are in a crisis that is getting worse, and we are in a defining moment where we face a crisis that is an existential threat to our species and to the future of life on this planet. We cannot continue to put more fracked methane gas pipelines into our ground. We know that they constantly leak. They are constantly leaking methane into our atmosphere. And if we keep building pipelines, we lose. Life on Earth loses. This is a critical issue for us, and we are running out of time. I look around at governments, and I am scared because I see a lack of leadership, which is why I commend you for the items that you've put onto this calendar today. It is an amazing step forward, and it is the type of courage and leadership that we need to show the world in order to actually move forward in a pathway that allows for organized human life to survive on this planet. You know, this is something that is, it's groundbreaking, it gets us to where we need to be, and when I look at the science, this is just normal. This is the normal, expected first step that we can take in a crisis like this. Let's not keep putting more gas pipelines into the ground. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Pham.
Good afternoon, Council. My name's Peter Pham, and today I am speaking on behalf of all my friends, Sylvia, Agnes, Kenny, Abby, and Karina, and myself. This morning, and I'm also a resident of San Jose District 3, this morning while sitting in my chemistry lab, my nose was clogged, and my friend smelled smoke, and I felt nauseous. My friend confirmed that it was the Kincaid Fire that was happening up in Northern California. I have asthma, and it is difficult for me to, and I'm very sensitive to any air particulates. These experiences, including my experience of the Paradise Fire back last winter, has compelled me to be part of the organizers who organized the strike in front of City Hall last month. Some of the goals that we agreed together as youths who want to take back our future include a phase-out of all fossil fuel projects and to electrify new constructions in order to achieve a net-zero greenhouse gas emissions in our city and hopefully our state. Voting no on this item is a step back from those goals. And I don't want my mother, who also has asthma, to smell any of those smokes and to know that these fires could have been prevented had we taken a much more broader view of our world to reduce our emissions, as this, as House in this city is the second-largest producer of greenhouse gas. And as a fun fact, as a chemistry major, methane, which is the primary source of natural gas, is actually 84 times stronger than carbon dioxide, so it will trap more greenhouse gas in our atmospheres. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the cards that we have, so I'm going to bring it back to Council. I know Councilmember Camus wanted to speak to this.
Yes, so I wanted to first thank everybody for coming to speak. I do support these goals, and I've already voted yes. And I also want to thank our staff who did the ADU research to make sure that we are not increasing prices on construction of ADUs. I appreciated the work that was done on that. I am going to be voting for this, but I still do have some more concerns. I think after this power shut off, several people, you know, complained about not being able to cook or take hot showers. I think redundancy is still an important issue that we need to tackle, and we need to tackle with, maybe, we need to start looking at ways to provide redundancy in our power grid if we're going to go down this route. And we also need to look at what's called a duck curve. I've been talking to a lot of, after this power shut off, I've been talking to a lot of PG&E folks and energy producers, and, you know, how could we become less susceptible to all these power shut offs? And I understand that we have to import a lot of our electricity from different sources. And at nighttime, we have to, a lot of our nighttime or evening usage comes from natural gas burning power plants. And they, by doing this, we will actually increase the need to produce energy using natural gas in the evenings. So I am concerned about this, and I hope we can move forward with battery technology as quickly as we can so that we do not actually achieve the opposite of what we're trying to achieve, which is lower greenhouse gas emissions. So I am going to support this, but I don't want, I don't want anyone to think our work is done just because we passed this thing today. We need to work on resiliency. We need to work on ways that we can provide energy during that duck, duck, I learned that there's a duck curve, duck curve, where we actually use most of our energy during the day when we get home and there's no solar power. I also learned that during the blackouts, even if you have solar panels, you do not have electricity. So I learned a lot during this power shut off period, and I'm looking forward to having many more discussions on how we can increase our resiliency, how we can invest in our grid, and what it's going to take to get us there, because just passing this legislation today isn't enough. And I'll make the motion to accept it, but I'm hoping that staff keeps that in mind.
It's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Foley.
Well, I was going to use this opportunity to try and convince my colleague, Councilmember Camus, to vote yes, but I already understand he's going to, so I don't need to spend that time. I appreciate all of those people who have come to speak on this issue. If we don't adopt these changes now, then when do we? We've already set the stage that we believe in banning buildings with gas is the right way to go, so why not expand it to all of our constructions? So I don't need to belabor the issue. Let's move on and vote.
All right, thank you. All right. So on to item 9.1. So I need to adjourn the regular council meeting and, oh, convene, thank you, convene the Redevelopment Successor Agency to vote on item 9.1, recognition of successor agency arbitrage rebate liability.
Move approval.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Okay, on to item 3.1, Report of the City Manager. Oh, sorry. I have to adjourn the successor agency and then reconvene the regular council meeting.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. There are a few things I would like to report out on the PG&E Public Safety Power Shut-Offs. First, a big thank you to all of our staff for responding to the latest shut off. I know I speak for everyone up here in thanking them for all the work they've done. With regard to shut off number two, as you're all aware, we did initiate our Power Vulnerability Plan, and that started up again last Thursday. Our Emergency Operations Center was opened up at 4:00 p.m. on Saturday, and we were open for two full 12-hour shifts. At this point, a significant portion of our residents have their power restored from the shut off number two. With regard to number three, power shut off number three, this morning we were notified by PG&E that a third power shut off can be expected in Santa Clara County, starting approximately tonight at 11:00 p.m. The current projections for San Jose are much smaller than number two and number one, so we're looking at maybe a little over 400 San Jose residents. So I think that's good news. We will be monitoring power shut off number three from City Hall, but will activate the EOC if necessary, and you will all continue to get updates from staff. One final note on mutual aid. Many of us want to share our concerns and support for those affected by the fires in Sonoma County. I want to thank and recognize the staff members that have been requested in mutual aid and that we have sent. I'll give you a little bit of a summary here. From our fire department, we have sent two public information officers, one safety officer, one division supervisor, and an engineering company. That includes four fire personnel. We hope they all remain safe while they're doing their work up there. At this point, we've received no requests for the police department. Our Office of Emergency Management has responded to a request from Sonoma to deploy our mobile Emergency Operations Center, so we sent that up there. They were expecting to be evacuated from their EOC. Fortunately, they did not need to evacuate, but they are using our mobile EOC for overflow and support of their EOC operations. And we are currently looking at an informal request to send additional EOC personnel from our city up to Sonoma County to help support their operations. So we'll continue to monitor, keep you informed, and updated as needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Vice Mayor, also, let the public know that there will be a full discussion of the power shut off tomorrow. There's a special meeting of the City Council to discuss that, should anyone have any questions or want to make any comments about that.
Thank you. All right, now we're on to item 3.3, Audit Report on Street and Utility In-Lu Feeds.
Good afternoon, Joe Royce, City Auditor. We're here to present to you our Audit of Street and Utility In-Lu Feeds. I'm joined today by Allison Polly from my office, as well as Matt Cano from Public Works, and John and John Risto from Department of Transportation. Stephanie Noble and Leonard Hyman from my office are in the audience. So new development constrain the city's infrastructure and amenities. To help finance potential improvements to address this, developers are required to either construct some portion of the improvements in the areas surrounding their property or help pay for their share of improvements through an in lieu fee. These fees are required as a condition for permit approval and are subject to the California Mitigation Fee Act. The objective of this audit was to review the collection, tracking, and use of in lieu fees with a focus on street and utility-related fees. The audit addressed fees related to traffic impacts, utility undergrounding, traffic signals, landscaped median islands, street improvements, and storm collection system improvements. These fees are collected by the Department of Public Works and tracked and used by Public Works and the Department of Transportation. Traffic impact fees, or TIFs, are charged in areas with associated development policies. These policies identify transportation improvements to mitigate or partially mitigate the effects of anticipated development on street traffic. Examples of improvements include new freeway interchanges, added turn lanes at intersections, and improved bike lanes. Along with state and regional grants and taxes, TIF revenues help to pay for these transportation infrastructure improvements. The city currently has four TIF areas, North San Jose, US 101 Oakland Mayberry, Evergreen East Hills, and Westchester 280. Utility undergrounding is the process of moving above-ground utility lines into below-ground substructures and removing utility poles. The city undergrounds utility lines through Rule 20A projects and Rule 20B projects. Rule 20A projects are funded and managed by PG&E on major thoroughfares. Our review focused on the Rule 20B program. The city funds Rule 20B projects through in lieu fees. Developments on major collectors or arterials or that are near commercial zones may be required to pay an in lieu utility undergrounding fee. Alternatively, they may underground existing utilities along the street fronting their property. The city then pools this money to fund 20B projects across the city. Exhibit four on the left of the slide shows the locations where utility undergrounding fees have been paid. The city also collects in lieu fees to fund improvements for traffic signals, street improvements, landscaped median islands, and storm collection system improvements. These fees fund local improvements needed because of a specific development and can be charged across the city. Exhibit five on the right of the slide shows where these fees have been paid. Exhibit four and five just refers to what the exhibit title is in the, in the audit report. While TIFs and undergrounding fees have been regularly charged to developers, fees for traffic signals, street improvements, median islands, and storm collection system improvements have decreased in recent years. Our report has four findings. The first finding is that consistency and transparency in fee calculation can be improved. Calculating in lieu fees is often complicated and may involve coordination among multiple city departments or work groups and developers. Overall, there, there were few instances in our sample in which we found that developers had not been charged fees appropriately. However, it was not always clear whether developer paid an appropriate fee because decisions surrounding fee calculations were not always clear, clear documented. This lack, or this lack of documentation may affect staff's ability to use fees received and make it difficult for staff to track how close a TIF area is to meeting capacity requirements in the policies. We recommend that Public Works develop guidelines for appropriate documentation and staff clarify procedures surrounding undergrounding fees to ensure fees are consistently applied. In addition, to track undergrounding fee activity and determine whether development needs to pay a fee, Public Works uses an old binder of city maps which it annotates using colored pencils to mark parcels that have been, that have paid a fee. Updating the information on this map is a manual process and as you can see on the slide, the binder is old and well-used. And all that has served its purpose, we recommend that Public Works develop a digital tool to identify streets designated for utility undergrounding, including whether a parcel is a frontage on a designated street and whether undergrounding fees have been paid previously. Our second finding is that improved tracking and coordination would enable program staff to better use in lieu fee revenue. During our review, we identified at least $810,000 in unspent in lieu fees intended for public purposes that had already been constructed and that should be reimbursed either to the city or the entity that constructed the improvement. We recommend that staff review these in lieu fees and public improvements to determine whether money should be transferred, improve coordination among program staff going forward, and update the annual in lieu fee report to ensure that information is accurate. Additionally, we noted that most fees, that though most fees were correctly put into funds intended for in lieu fees, it appears that a few were incorrectly placed in a separate fund intended to track deposits made by developers. We recommend that staff review the fees in the depositor fund to determine whether any in lieu fees are held there in error. Our third finding is that the city should clarify expectations of the utility undergrounding in lieu fee program. Utility undergrounding is a time-consuming and capital-intensive process. Part of the 20B program's slow pace is due to the limited revenue generated through in lieu fees. The 20B projects can be combined with 20A funding or completed by developers. The in lieu fees are the only source of city funding to support the program. In recent years, the city has collected an average of $1.3 million annually, annually through undergrounding fees, which amounts to less than half of 1% of the total needed to complete the current undergrounding master plan. As shown in the slide, the amount the city holds in reserve is just a small portion of the overall funds needed to complete projects. The slow collection of revenue is due in part to the way that the fee is structured. Fees are only charged when parcels are developed and the fee only covers half the cost of undergrounding the frontage of a parcel. Though Public Works provides the city council with annual reports to the city's undergrounding, on the city's undergrounding programs, unclear expectations on scope, timelines, and funding make it difficult to evaluate the 20B program's success. Given the slow collection of undergrounding fees, we recommend Public Works provide more realistic timeframes and more clearly describe the long-term nature of the program. We also recommend Public Works review the base fee to ensure it closely compares to the actual cost of undergrounding. And finally, if the city wants to pursue utility undergrounding more aggressively, it will need to identify additional funding for the program. Our fourth finding is that although city, the city has improved the management of revenues for traffic impact fee-funded areas, TIF funding will remain slow. The city has collected $85 million in TIFs for transportation infrastructure improvements in the four TIF areas. Of that, $68 million is still in reserves. In total, the city needs $1.2 billion for identified improvements, most of which are in and around North San Jose. We found that TIFs fund improvements gradually without set timelines. Incoming TIFs have been slow for several reasons, including slower than anticipated growth or development, particularly in the North San Jose area. Additionally, incoming TIFs have been slow as a result of trip credits such as those for existing use and incentive programs that reduce or waive fees for certain types of industrial development. During the course of the audit, we identified additional revenues that were intended to supplement the reduced fees and staff corrected the process for reconciling that money and identified additional $370,000 that will go towards improvements in North San Jose. Additional money is anticipated. Moving forward, we recommend more formalized coordination between Public Works, which calculates and collects TIFs, and the Office of Economic Development, which is responsible for related programs, including coordination of development agreements and disclosures of the reduced fees under state law. Finally, we found that the criteria for fee waivers in the US 101 Oakland Mayberry area can be made more transparent. These are currently defined only in internal memo and we recommend the administration take the criteria to counsel for inclusion in the US 101 Oakland Mayberry policy. Our report includes a total of eight recommendations to improve the collection, tracking, and use of street and utility fees. We'd like to thank staff from Public Works, DOT, PBCE, OED, the City Attorney's Office, and the Budget Office for their time and insight during the audit. And ask you to accept the report. And with that, I'll turn it over to Matt and John to present their response to the audit and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Joe. I appreciate you and your team's effort. I always, you know, this is some, this is a program where we've known for a while that there's some older fees that have been sitting there that we really needed to look at and either use those fees on something or maybe transfer them to a project that's already been completed and haven't really gotten around to robustly looking at them. So it was great to have your team help us analyze this, these funds and these in lieu fees and help us focus on what's most important. And so I really appreciate that. We've made progress on a lot of the recommendations already and really look forward to continuing to move forward to kind of have a tighter, tighter review and annual tracking of our in lieu fees and a tighter training program for all of our managers. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe, and your team, Allison, Stephanie, and Leonard, for all the great work and also John and Matt for your response. We have no cards on this subject, so I'm going to bring it back to council and council member Camus.
Thank you, staff, and thank you for looking into this, this very, very timely subject, undergrounding utility wires. It's really the talk of the town, if you will, at least in my area. And I was, I was wondering, I know a while back, we were talking about combining 20B and 20A funds. I think one of them is from PG&E and one of them is the stuff that we collect, correct? Into undergrounding some projects, but we were stuck on some wording between us and PG&E. Is, are we still stuck on wording?
No, we're not. We have, we have agreed to sign their agreements and so we have signed on a project-by-project basis. We are signing their agreements now and we, and moving our projects forward.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the report.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. No more council members want to speak on this, so let's vote. So on to item 3.4, report on request for proposal for parking garage and service lot management services at the Norman Y. Mineta San Jose International Airport. There's no presentation.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a speaker. Carolyn Bauer.
Mine doesn't necessarily regard that parking, that, that portion of the parking, because that's a management thing. But my name's Carolyn Bauer and I'd like to say I'm Mayor LaCarter's favorite TSA officer in San Jose, which is one of my jobs. I'm here as an officer and a union rep for TSA officers who mostly live, work, and vote in San Jose. It was just announced that in less than three weeks from our busiest and most stressful travel season, Thanksgiving, that our officers will have the added stress of needing to wake up 30 minutes earlier and arrive home 30 minutes later due to the failure of airport staff to plan appropriately for the continued increase in passenger travel and parking as they removed much of the short-term parking to build extra gates. There is a parking lot on the opposite airside of the terminal that could have been converted to a revenue-based parking lot during the construction of those additional gates. It wasn't. Now, out of nowhere, faced with three weeks before this busy travel season, their solution, their only solution, is to permanently displace the lowest-paid, hard-to-retain employees responsible for ensuring that every plane that leaves San Jose arrives at its destination safely. We fought hard long ago to have nearby parking. We are the officers who help make that large-growing airport successful. My solution is to offer that parking lot to the casual traveling passengers for free until staff can put up revenue-accepted gates, allowing us to keep our focus on preventing threats to aviation. I live in South San Jose. My usual wake-up time is 2:45 to 3:00 in the morning to arrive at my duty location by 4:00 AM with no traffic. This is going to mean I have to wake up at 2:00 in the morning to be at a duty location at 4:00 in the morning when I have no traffic, because they want to force us to have to go around and use that parking lot instead of the nearby parking that there are 3,800 airport employee permits for, but we make it work with less than the 1,000 spaces. This will not affect management or airport administration. Those apparently are, they have their private parking and they need those spaces, but it will affect us. I have to arrive home to pick up my daughter at 1:00, so.
Thank you very much.
My terms then. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, I have a couple of questions for your.
He doesn't want to ask.
Thank you.
You could ask questions, you just can't voter, agendaize, or do stuff with those. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions for, for staff, not.
For staff.
Yeah, sorry. Either someone, either Jennifer or someone from the airport staff. It's around the DBE requirements. Hi, first of all, I want to thank you for asking, answering some of the questions we had beforehand, but I just wanted to get a further clarification. So for this project, it does fall under our DBE program and my understanding is that the, the contractor has the intention of subcontracting to DBEs, but there's no specific requirements for them to do that, do that subcontracting or ways to hold them accountable if they don't follow through with the subcontracting to DBEs? So I just want to get a clarification on how that process would work.
Yes, Vice Mayor, Bob Lockhart, Deputy Director of Operations at the airport. There, we cannot by federal law put requirements into the contract. However, SP Plus has committed that they were going to do as much outsourcing as possible to DBEs and ACDBE companies so that they can take care of any of their subcontracting capabilities or future things that are coming forward with disadvantaged business enterprises, if possible.
Did you also, Jennifer, want to speak to that?
I'm sorry?
I didn't know if you.
Oh, no. What Bob said was accurate, correct. I believe that there wasn't any specific goal set for this particular contract, but the airport does have an overall program goal and SP Plus has expressed that they would try to do business with ACDBE contractors as, to extent possible, or are committed to working with the airport identifying those contractors. But legally, my, our understanding is that we cannot require them to do so in the agreement.
So the contract would be, it has an option after two years for a renewal. Would that be a point where we can include some type of language or measurement of whether they meet those goals or are we still precluded from, from doing that legally?
We will continue to monitor them throughout the contract. We have members of staff within our office, I believe, who met with your office, for Magdalena and Matthew, that do work on following up on all ACDBE contracts to verify that they're taking the best efforts to gain more ACDBE percentages. Our goal for the airport is, I believe it's 10.6%, and we're right now around 14%. So it's showing that that process is working and we believe SP Plus will be able to do that. As far as a requirement, from what we've been told, we cannot put it into the contract as a requirement for an extension of the contract.
So Mayor, Vice Mayor, let me ask you, let me try to answer that question as well. My understanding is the way that the federal government works is that you, you have to have race-neutral provisions in the selection of contractors. So long as you meet your overall goals, you, you are not allowed to put in any specific reference with regard to MBEWBEs in the contracts. To the extent that the, that the overall goals are not met, at that point, the federal government would consider putting specific language in contracts. Otherwise, if you're meeting your goals, the government will not allow you to do that. And that's why you can't just insert contract language in the, the contracts if you're meeting your goals with race-neutral provisions.
Understood. Is that something, when it comes time for the, to exercise the option on the contract, are, whether they met their goals or not, can that be factored into our decision to execute on the option?
You, you cannot focus on an individual contractor to determine whether or not you're going to impose those requirements. It has to be an overall goal. If your overall goals for all your concessionaires out there are. for all your concessionaires out there are not met, then you can start focusing on individual contracts. You can't just pick a contractor and say, oh, at the option, we're going to include you in there if your overall goals are being met by race-neutral provisions.
So we actually have to come to the end of the three-year cycle, the DBE cycle, to determine whether we've met that overall goal. And then after that, if we haven't met the goal, then we can take action after the fact.
I believe that's true. I'm not the expert on DBE, but I believe that's true, yes.
Okay. And so each individual contract, there's no accountability in terms of meeting those goals?
Correct.
Okay. Well, thank you for that clarification. We have a motion on the floor in a second, so let's vote. All right, thank you. Okay, we're on to item 3.5, Citywide Capital Improvement Program for Fiscal Year 2018-19, and there will be a presentation.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Jones and City Council. Matt Cano, Director of Public Works, Mike O'Connell, and John Cannon, Deputy Directors in Public Works, with me today. Even though it's just Public Works sitting down here, the Capital Improvement Program is a partnership amongst many city departments and the community. Since Public Works is a part of the partnership on pretty much every program, we get the luxury of compiling all the statistics and data and reporting on an annual basis. But as you all know, we are not the lead on every single project and program, and we partner with everybody, departments such as ESD, PRNS, Airport, and DOT and others. And so again, we are excited about continuing to move forward, not just with delivering our capital projects to the community as great final products, but also building our community while we're building our capital projects, whether that's our local workforce or our local and small businesses. And a lot of the programs that we've started to implement this past fiscal year will be bearing fruit in future reports. A quick snapshot, we have 176 projects, and this is, the numbers talking about right now are as of last fiscal year, because this is a fiscal year-end report, so the year that ended this past June. 176 projects total, and 78 of those projects were completed last fiscal year. And the pie chart just shows by project type, with environmental and utility services being the big blue area, and then the next highest with number of projects are transportation and neighborhood services. And again, we had 78 projects that completed last year. That's just a little, we had 70 projects that completed the prior year to that, and so fairly consistent there. One thing that we continue to track and monitor is how we do compared to our engineer's estimates, how we're tracking the bidding environment. But we also track, and we're doing well there, as indicated in the report, but we also track how are costs going up or down in certain areas. And wanted to just share with you, it's dynamic. On the left is a cast iron sewer, a typical project cost per linear foot, and as you can see, since 2015, it's fluctuated up and down and remained fairly much the same over the past four years. And then we track pavement projects at the airport of, and it's tough to do apples-to-apples comparison, because every project is unique, but we do our best on these examples to strip out the non-uniqueness and compare apples-to-apples as much as we can. And we definitely see those pavement projects continuing to increase over the past three years significantly. This is something that feeds into our engineer's estimates and our costs as we continue to move forward. And as I mentioned, we're always, throughout all of our programs, continuing to monitor this as close as we can to see if there's any adjustments we need to make to our project delivery methods. There's a number of programs that we've been working on, and we talked a lot about these at council about three weeks ago when we made our Public Works municipal code changes, so I won't dwell on them too much today. But the Public Works Academy that we established this past year has engaged a number of contractors and employees to further educate them on how to work better with the City of San Jose, pre-qualification pool for our minor public works projects to allow contractors and subcontractors and local contractors to more easily work with the City of San Jose. And then ongoing policy work. We came a few weeks ago with the, I would say, the start of our DBE disadvantaged business program and with the City of San Jose to complete that council policy work and start on that program that we'll be reporting on on a regular basis to you. We'll be coming up towards the end of this, or later in this fiscal year, on potential local hire policy for our public works construction projects, which is on the council priority list as well. And again, before the end of the fiscal year, coming forward with recommendations on wage theft prevention policy, and we've discussed before, our labor compliance software solutions. So these are some of the items that have started this fiscal, this past fiscal year, and we'll be reporting metrics in more depth in the coming future reports. Just real briefly, I wanted to flip through a few projects. Alviso's pump station, we're actually bragging about the public art in this slide. Both projects were completed recently, and it was exciting to be at the opening event to see some, a pump station that usually wouldn't be as celebrated by the community, although it is a huge public safety benefit to the community of Alviso, but being celebrated in large part because of the awesome collaboration with our public art team in the city. The next, this is the Headworks Critical Improvements, a very important project that was completed last year at the regional wastewater facility. And the Environmental Utilities Services CSA, most of which is the regional wastewater facility, has an overall CIP value of five years of 1.7 billion. So there's a lot of projects that you've heard of a lot that are moving forward there. Neighborhood Services CSA, this includes parks and libraries and a few other projects. And the one we're highlighting as completion in this past fiscal year is the Del Monte Shade Structure, but as a project, this is a multi-phase park that's very important to this community out there that is going to be continuing to grow in the future with the third phase due to the acquisition of some properties just south of Del Monte Park. And this Fire Station 29 generator replacement, very timely, given our recent power outages. This is Fire Station 29 on Innovation Drive in Council District 4. This fire station serves as a backup for communications during emergencies, so it is very important for the city to have an adequate generator there. We had a 40-kilowatt generator that was replaced with a 200-kilowatt generator. And last year, when we reported to you on the Convention Center, we reported a very sexy project, which was turning our exhibit halls into state-of-the-art facilities for sound and music and lighting. While not as sexy, a very important Convention Center restroom upgrades, partnering with our partners at the Convention Center to upgrade 16 restrooms to current codes and standards to meet the corporate standards for our world-class venue. That project was valued at $2.4 million. And you've definitely heard a lot about our temporary gate, interim gate facility in partnership with the airport that was completed this past fiscal year to allow much more capacity for flights boarding at our airport. And with that, we'd like to close the presentation and ask for your acceptance and any questions you have or feedback you have on our annual report on the citywide CIP program. And as I mentioned before, we'll be reporting a lot more metrics on recently implemented policy changes such as Measure T, Measure S, and Public Works Mini Code changes, and project labor agreements in the next report as we gather more metrics on those changes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Matt. Councilmember Foley.
Matt, thank you for the report and the presentation, and I just wanted to call out the key performance measures and how close you are to meeting the target. So I assume that by the next report, you'll be right on target, because you're so close to that. I just wanted to thank you for that, and with that, I will move the report.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Matt, first of all, I want to thank you and your team for answering some of our questions ahead of time, but I definitely want to go back and focus on your chart with the local and small business dollars awarded, as well as the contracts awarded, and particularly looking at the decline. And I know that some of it is due to some high-dollar awards that went to small business. But I just want to get an understanding in terms of how we're moving the needle in terms of driving more business to the small business and having a more robust contracting program. So can you kind of shed some light in terms of what we're looking at now in terms of these numbers and where we're going?
Sure. Thank you for the question and highlighting the charts in Section 3 of our report, which is an attachment to the memorandum. I could say that I was a bit in shock when my team showed, when the team showed me this chart in my first year in my job, and we, and I've been talking, I've been talking a lot about small and local business participation, and we've seen declines. But we're turning that into a positive, saying that it's, the conversations we've been having are that, hey, it's good that we've been implementing programs this fiscal year, because if this, we don't want this decline to keep happening. And so, yes, to your point on the top chart of the two is the percentage of dollars that is awarded. And although it looks like a steep decline, as you mentioned, we had one major project in fiscal year 1718 that was a bit of an anomaly. Last week at the city council, we did award over $50 million worth of projects to two local businesses between the airport interim gates and the nitrification project. But I, and then on the, the chart at the bottom, which is the local awards, that decline, I'm sorry, the percentage of contracts awarded to small and local contractors, that decline was a little more concerning to me, because I see that as that we're not spreading the wealth enough to enough entities. So as you mentioned, we've implemented a number of programs, and it's going to take a few years for those programs to completely bear fruit and have a significant measurable impact. However, there's a lot of measurements we can take as we go every three to six months about how many local and small businesses are participating in our Public Works Academy, how many local and small businesses are participating and become pre-qualified through our Minor Public Works program. We look at, and we still have to come back and answer how we're going to do this, but as was brought up at the last council meeting, we're going to look at, from the ethnic chambers, how much participation we're getting from different communities, from different disadvantaged communities. So there's a lot of metrics we can measure as we go to make sure that we are going to hit the mark in a few years and continuing to have these numbers of small and local businesses increase.
Thank you, Matt. And I also want to recognize you and appreciate the hard work that you and your team have done in terms of trying to get more business and more contracts to small and local businesses. So that is appreciated, and I'm looking forward to moving that line, that trend line up quite a bit. So thank you. All right, we have a motion that will second it. Let's vote. Okay, on to item 4.1, Actions Related to the Lease Agreements for the Office Space Occupied by the Independent Police Auditor. All right. No one wants to... Councilmember Foley.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick questions. In reviewing the lease, Nancy, I didn't, I see that it's a full-service lease, but I didn't see who is paying for the taxes and insurance. That wasn't, the utilities and maintenance are called out, but the taxes and insurance are?
It is the property owner, the landlord.
Okay, all right. And they're paying for all tenant improvements as well, is that
Yes, they are.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilmember Camus.
Yeah, so when was the last time this office moved? I remember a couple of, couldn't have been more than two years ago where the office moved, and this shouldn't be a remainder of this contract, and, yeah, so...
Time flies, Councilmember Nancy Klein, Office of Economic Development. Auditor moved into the space at 152 North Third Street in 2015, and there is one year remaining on the lease.
So, so we're moving to a higher, more expensive area, and then, and what is the reasoning?
I'm happy to report, Councilmember, we're moving for the reason that the developer who purchased the building is maximizing and doing quite a lot of construction work for new tenants that will bring eyes on to St. James Park. And it is construction work, which is, as the police, independent police auditor is kind enough to be here, very disconcerting. And so we worked to actually be in space that's less expensive.
Okay. Well, thank you. Would it be a, it would be good to have a list of the offices and those costs available to us, for the council, that we could better understand the options, not just for the IPA offices, for other offices that we're subleasing, and not, I'd at least appreciate that. I think I asked for that like seven years ago, a long time ago, but I haven't seen anything updated as far as how many offices we're leasing, leasing out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did somebody already make a motion? Thank you.
All right, let's vote. Thank you, Nancy and staff, for your hard work on this issue. All right, on to item 4.2, the CSL Study for Convention Center South Hall Site. Do you have a presentation?
We do. I'll kick us off here. I'm here, Nancy Klein, again, Office of Economic Development, with Blagie Zalalich, who is our downtown manager, and John Cots, who's a principal with Convention Sports and Leisure, known as CSL. Blagie, I'll ask you to do the slides, please. Oh, there you go. John will do that. CSL is known as a leading advisory firm specializing in convention, sports, entertainment, and visitor industries. The item before you was cross-referenced from the Community Economic Development Committee in August. Today, staff is asking that council accept staff's report on the work completed to date on this item. I'll be providing a brief introduction, then John will review CSL's analysis and finding, and Blagie will share the next steps for the work. In August of 2018, the city purchased the roughly 4.3-acre site known as the South Hall or Tenth Site. With the purchase of the site, staff began to explore a potential expansion of the Convention Center and additional potential development on the site. As part of that work, staff hired CSL to develop economic data, including a comparable and competitive facilities analysis and market demand assessment. CSL's research included over 100 interviews with national, state, and local stakeholders. The high-level outcome is that there is indeed a demand for 110,000 to 130,000 square feet of additional Convention Center space. Key to the success of a potential Convention Center expansion is the development of an additional 1,000 to 1,500 hotel rooms within half a mile of the Convention Center. A portion of those hotel rooms are best achieved through a 600-to-800-room headquarter hotel that can allocate a room block for conferences and events. With that, I turn the presentation over to John.
Thank you, Nancy. And Nancy gave you a great summary of the high-level findings of a heavily research-based process. We spent many, many months reaching out to your current customers, potential future customers, looking at what your competition is doing, that's what I'll call trend forward. What are the next generation of Convention Center amenities we need to look at? And out of that, indeed, we find San Jose is a very strong market. Event planners are interested in coming here. You've got a fairly small building as it is today, so this notion of adding space in the not-too-distant future becomes somewhat of a reality for us. So why don't I take you through some of the key findings, slide by slide. This is obviously a condensed version of about 100 different pieces of analysis. But I want to start with taking a look at the overall environment as an event planner might look at this. You're looking at the restaurants, retail, food and beverage, bars, nightlife, within the vicinity of the Convention Center. And you can see we've got a fairly robust inventory even today, not including the development that's going to start to take place when you've got 3,000 new residential units, the university's investing, the SOFA district is emerging. A lot is happening that the convention planner will look at and say, this is an opportunity for us to give our event attendees and exhibitors a good experience within the downtown area. I compare this to Moscone Center in San Francisco. I compare this to Moscone Center in San Francisco, and candidly, I'd rather walk around your area than walk around Moscone. So we have a very compelling case to the planner to say, our destination itself is, is really good and getting better as we go forward. We also look at the occupancy of the exhibit space in the existing Convention Center, 143,000 square feet, and we're running really close to 70%. And you can see an upward trend. 2017 was down a little bit due to some repairs and maintenance to the exhibit hall, but overall, we're above 65%, almost 70% in 2018, which is an indication, once you get to 70%, that we need more space. So we are really pushing the envelope to the point where we can't really fit too much more business into the existing building. I also look at a lot of metrics that we dig into. This relates to room night generation. That's a very important role for the Convention Center, always fulfilling our objectives. We look at the revenue of the building. We want to make sure we're not hemorrhaging cash. What you find here, buried in this data, is a very interesting pivot. If you look at the first three years of 13, 14, 15, our room night generation from conventions was, was pretty solid. I've got the numbers here, about 124,000 room nights, and that dropped in the following three years to 70,000. Conversely, our conference business went from 182,000 to 231,000. What happened is, the price for hotels and the availability of hotel rooms in downtown San Jose is very challenging. I can't offer a room block to a convention planner, so we're losing some of that association convention business. And what they've done is infilled that with high-tech corporate business that also generates decent room nights. So we've been able to maintain, on the right side of the chart, what you see is this, this association business in the, in years 2013, 14, 15, generated about $46 million in building revenue. The, the last three years, it generated 106 million. So this corporate business is not only helping fill the gap in room nights, but it's generating a lot of money for the building, which is helping in terms of great operations and investments and so on. We also look at the holes, I'll call them the holes in the calendar. Where could I put new business? If I looked at 2018, all 365 days represented in the bars, how many four-period days do I have the building available for an event? And the answer is seven. So during the entire 2018, I had seven. Only one of those, the one in February, occurred during a period of time where I had 1,000 rooms available in the downtown area. Every other one of those periods, there really weren't enough hotel rooms in the market to even bring in a piece of business, even if we wanted to. So we've got this full-building, limited hotel supply that's, that's hampering our ability to attract our fair market share. We take a look at the size of the building and you can kind of understand what's happening here. On the right-hand side, we see the exhibit space, the largest contiguous exhibit space. And, and I don't want to say we're a boutique building, but we're much smaller than a lot of the other buildings. And I can tell you right now Sacramento's in the midst of a 50 to 75 million dollar improvement project. Seattle is doubling the size of their Convention Center. Austin's looking at a major expansion of their building. So our competition continues to invest and we're going to continue to drop relative to the size of the space. On the left-hand side is the total sellable space, and that combines the meeting and ballroom space with the exhibit space. So even if we added 100,000 square feet of space, we're still kind of in the midpoint of our competitive and comparable set. We look at industry trends, and I'm really a big believer on the importance of the amenities and the features of your building, a trend forward beyond simply space. We, we would love to see investment in what I call open space learning. So you've got a lot of attendees, rather than going to the chicken dinner for the banquet, they, they end up in the lobby in a, a learning session that's fairly informal. The, the building itself throughout the entire space becomes an educational environment. And we don't quite have that yet. We look at the augmented virtual reality. We did a survey recently and I think 19% of planners said that they've used some form of augmented virtual reality in the past. 54% expect to use it in the future. That requires certain space, certain lighting, certain technology. So there's a number of trends that we're going to suggest as we get into this and report back to the city, that we need to make sure the existing building invests in, let alone the expansion. So if we had to wrap it all up, we're looking at an exhibit space expansion of 70 to 100,000 square feet. That's on top of your existing 143, right? We're looking at perhaps 20,000 square feet of added meeting space, and we're also looking at some outdoor plaza space that is also something that the planners are looking for as part of their event. Now, when I add that, 70 to 100,000 square feet, it isn't simply another hall exactly like the one you have today. We see it more of an Anaheim model where they created the 100,000 square feet in pieces of, as small as 5,000 or 6,000 square feet, so they can subdivide it to be highly flexible. This would be kind of a new generation hall, if you will, to marry against the existing exhibit space that you have. Nancy mentioned the hotel inventory. As we've demonstrated, we don't have enough commitability. We would love to see at least 1,500 rooms in the downtown area. You've got about 400 that I think are coming in pretty soon. We can speculate that there'll be another 400 from the private sector over the next five years while this project moves forward. That leaves us with 600, 700 rooms to go relative to the ideal, and we'd love to see that in a headquarter hotel. That's the large box that the event planners can move all of their attendees in as opposed to scattering them in smaller hotels all over the downtown area. We really do need that big-box facility. And lastly, the, the concept of being able to walk the district around the San Jose Convention Center is phenomenal. So if I can get across market to the SOFA district, San Pedro Square, historic district, and continue to invest in those linkages, that's a great package of building, hotel, walkability that I think we can create for the next generation of the Convention Center. Now, if I look at funding, a headquarter hotel, they are difficult projects to fund. They're very expensive. And what we see in a lot of communities is they're willing to offer a package of incentives to a developer, as long as that developer's willing to give them something called a room block agreement. So it will allow Team San Jose, for example, to go to that hotel and say, I want six of your 700 rooms for my convention coming in. I don't want you to tell me no. And that has an economic value, and that's, that's where you see the subsidies from the community in exchange for those room block agreements. Very common model, and we'll be walking through that in some of the next stages. Lastly, in the financials and economic impact, I tend to be very conservative on these. I think adding this new space that's trend-forward and very flexible will increase your revenues of the building, and I think it's likely it'll increase revenues slightly more than your expenses. But we are suggesting that we plan for a constant financial performance. Let's not count on that improvement. We'll put it in the bank if it materializes, but it, it isn't a situation where you're going to go backwards. Let's, let's say we're going to break even on this from an operation standpoint. And then in terms of the direct delegate spending, the new money coming in for the hotels, the restaurants, retail, transportation, all the other sectors that are benefited by the Convention Center. In 2018, we had $112 million in direct spending. That's the highest this building has ever generated. What we're suggesting to you is if you make the strategic investment to stay competitive in the industry, you could sustain the highest number you've ever generated in your history on an average annual basis. Some days it's going to be 90 million, some days it'll be 120 million, but our, our benchmark will, will now be 112 million on a sustained annual average basis. And that's a big thing to say because our industry isn't growing super fast, 1%, 2% similar to the economy. Our competitor and competitors are investing in their product, so to increase our market capture, that's saying a lot. But all our research says we are undersized, we are a stronger market than we're performing for a variety of reasons, so we think those numbers are achievable. And I think, I think that's it.
Thanks, John. So with respect to the next steps, what we're looking at doing is putting together an interdepartmental team that is going to decide, discuss, and decide the approach to the site. We would also determine the resources that are needed to kind of continue to move this process forward, so assessing our current staff resources and budget allocations, and then determining what we would need for additional staff time, staff work, and consultant work, which we'll need. Working together with our colleagues in finance and budget to determine kind of the appropriate funding strategy and mechanism for what this would, would look like. There have been a number of cities recently that have undergone this type of project, so taking a look at those different projects and the different strategies that have been employed and assessing what's going to work best for, for San Jose in our environment. And then also determining the appropriate kind of procurement path to development of the site. So we anticipate that those are kind of the, the next four primary next steps within the next five to six months. And I think with that, we're just going to take questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Nancy and Blagie and, and John for, for that presentation. There's no cards. Councilmember Davis.
Appreciate the report and just have one question, which is, we were in the hotel business with the Hayes Mansion. That didn't work out, and we basically couldn't sell it fast enough and then had a hard time selling it. So how is this different and why would we be successful at it? And if we're not actually increasing our revenue, this seems like a lot of activity and investment for maybe not that much gain. So how are we actually determining what our cost versus benefits are on this? And I heard Blagie's five-to-six-month kind of what's next, but I didn't hear that cost-benefit. How do we decide whether we go or no-go? I just heard about some of the staff costs, but not overall.
Councilmember, thank you very much for the question. The city wouldn't own and operate this hotel. The hotel, as John will be able to say better than I, will support Convention Center, but the, the land may be owned by the city, but the hotel and the operations will not be the responsibility of the city.
I understand that, but we're, if I, if I understood the slide correctly, we're still taking on some of that risk. Right? It's a public-private partnership.
Right. Not necessarily risk. So the cost to develop a large headquarter hotel is, is pretty substantial. They've got a lot of meeting space, back-of-house space, and the net income of that hotel in, in many cases, isn't enough to support a developer's return on investment. There's a gap there. Normally, we'd be, we'd say, well, that's his problem or her problem. In the case of a Convention Center headquarter hotel, cities are interested in those products because they leverage the investment in the Convention Center. As we've seen earlier, we're missing association and corporate conventions because we don't have enough hotel room inventory. So, so what we're suggesting is you would make, you would enter into a public-private partnership, the developer would take all the risk, but you may have to provide certain incentives, non-risk incentives, but that cost you something in exchange for the room block agreement.
So you say we're missing, we're missing conventions, but we're, we've got an almost fully booked Convention Center. I mean, isn't that, that's what we want.
Well, that's why we're talking about an expansion. So if we added 100,000 square feet, we believe that the 70% occupancy you're running now, we could maintain a fairly high occupancy and generate additional economic impact, room nights. I don't really look at the operations of the building, that's kind of a small number relative to the hundreds of millions of dollars of, of economic impact. And what we're suggesting is there is an opportunity to, I would say materially increase the average annual economic impact of the building if you have the, the assets that we're talking about, namely the expanded Convention Center and the, the hotel room inventory.
And, and just to add to that, Councilmember, we're in a more and more difficult competitive advantage in competing for the types of sports events that we've had because other communities do offer more of a room block, and as well as the type of space or size of space. So as those other entities continue to add space, we anticipate we'll lose ground in terms of our desirability as a, as a venue.
So are we talking about room blocks that are going to be substantially cheaper than the amount, than the cost right now? Because we already have that issue, so we have, we lose out on tournaments at Solar for America Ice because the teams can't afford to stay even if there are rooms downtown. They're just too expensive for them. Are we talking about substantially cheaper?
I would say they're, the, the room block agreement itself can have two broad provisions. One is, you hotel owner, you have to give me the rooms. Two, we can stipulate, and many of them do, you have to give me those rooms at no more than a small percentage over last year's average group rate, not corporate rate, group rate. So you can have some price certainty and availability in the room block agreements. One thing I want to be careful about is not all events are equal, and if, if the International Association of Medical, somebody or other is coming in and they're bringing in, you know, 1,800 people, spending a fortune in your hotels, they can afford a certain room price point. Amateur sport events have always been tough, and, and I ought to be candid with you, even if we build a headquarter hotel, we're still going to have a tough time getting them in peak season, midweek. But we will be able to go more after the higher-end association and corporate conventions that generate a tremendous amount of economic impact.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Councilmember Peralas.
Thank you. I just want to thank you for your, your efforts on, on this, and I look forward to staff coming back with a plan of action as we move forward. I know as the liaison for Team San Jose, one of the biggest setbacks for us in regards to the, the full potential, even though we're, we're certainly at near capacity, but the full potential of our Convention Center is the lack of hotel rooms that we have in our city. More importantly, even though conventions that we may pull into our Convention Center, we are regularly losing that business to neighboring cities and their hotels. And we lose that TOT dollars and, and the tax, the taxes that we may generate just from the retail sales that, that individuals that are staying in these neighboring cities will, will spend their dollars in. So I think, irregardless of an expansion of the Convention Center, we absolutely know that we have the need for the hotel. But at the same time, going hand-in-hand, certainly we would not be able to lure in a, a hotel of this size, of this magnitude, a signature hotel, right, that, that, unless we had this expansion of the, of the Convention Center, because we don't currently have the space in our Convention Center to really lure in some of those, those major conventions. And I also think too, it's a sort of a decision of, of this council, right, in regards to the direction we're going, that do we want a Convention Center that's going to actually make San Jose more attractive as a destination? And we currently are sort of at a capacity. We've, I think, done well with what we have, but we see where our limitations are. And if we want to grow into that manner, which I personally do, and I know Team San Jose does, and the board directors there do, then we will have to make some investments to, to both grow our Convention Center and expand our hotel capability. This particular site that we purchased last year with, with that sort of overarching intent gives us that opportunity to do so in a, a site that's adjacent to the current Convention Center and an opportunity to, to get into a, a public-private partnership with this hotel or potential hotel operator. So I'm excited about this opportunity and, and again, look forward to, to staff moving forward there with their recommendations to us.
Yeah, I also want to thank you for, for this analysis. I think that we actually made the decision long ago technically because we bought the big tent. So now that we own a big tent, I think we need to see what we could do with it other than keeping it as a big tent. And I will make the motion to approve this report and go forward.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. No more council members want to speak on it, so let's vote. Next is item 4.4, actions related to an amendment with the Home First Services of Santa Clara County grant agreement to use housing trust fund and homeless emergency aid program funding for overnight warming locations during the cold weather season. And that's a mouthful.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Lee Wilcox, Chief of Staff to the City Manager. And joining me is a cast of characters, Jackie Morales-Fran from the Housing Department, Jill Bourne, our City Librarian, John Cicirelli, our Director of Parks, Recreation, and Neighborhood Services, Reagan Henninger, Deputy Director of the Housing Department, and Sarah Zarate, Assistant to the City Manager. 6,097, this is the estimated number of homeless people living in our city, according to the most recent homeless census and, and survey. The number of, the number represents people, families, children, seniors and young adults, 83% of whom lived in Santa Clara County prior to becoming homelessness or homeless. Almost 40% of the individuals lived outdoors in our streets, our parks, and encampments. Another 17 lived in their cars. Our homeless crisis is an affordable housing crisis, it's an economic and jobs crisis, and it's a systems failure crisis. We know transformative change at a systems level is needed, and many are working on articulating those solutions. But while we work on long-term strategies, we are challenged with finding short-term and emergency solutions. We know all, you know this all too well, as you work to balance the needs of our unsheltered community with that of our house residents. Couple of weeks ago- Couple of weeks ago, we presented this framework to you, which is the County of Santa Clara's commute, or county's Community Plan to End Homelessness. The plan seeks to address at a county level the complexity of the problem with strategies aimed not only at building affordable housing and expanding provider capacity, but also at naming and addressing the root causes of homelessness that contribute to the increasing number of people falling into homelessness every day. Importantly, through Pillar Three, the plan specifically calls out the need to improve the quality of life for our unsheltered population while being attentive to the neighborhood level concerns. We'll be back in early 2020 to talk to you more about the draft strategies of each of these pillar, each of these pillars, but we bring this up to you today because we think that the new OWL program before you today is one example of what Pillar Three strategy looks like in practice and that we'll walk through today. As one of the headlines I showed you on the first slide noted, while homelessness is increasing, so is the frustration from various areas of our community. And the fact is that now more than ever, we need our neighborhoods, our businesses, to help us to develop our short-term and long-term housing solutions. For us in the city of San Jose, Pillar Three is about serving first and foremost, but also acknowledging that while we serve our own vulnerable populations, we must listen and address concerns of neighborhood residents and community groups. To move our community forward, towards a path for more housing solutions, we are applying a theory of change that processes, that proposes increasing services to our homeless individuals by increasing services to those neighborhoods hosting those solutions in order to get more neighborhoods to say yes. Yes, we want to help. Yes, we want to be part of a solution. The modified OWL program in front of you today, described in the memo, is grounded in this larger intentional framework. And with that, I'll hand it over to Jackie to walk you through that.
Thank you, Lee. So Lee's already gone over the numbers, but a little over 5,000 of the people that were counted back in January are living on our streets and are unsheltered. And unsheltered means not only individuals who are living on our streets, but people who are living in abandoned buildings, storage structures, vehicles, encampments, or any other place that is unfit for human habitation. There are only 849 shelter beds located in the city of San Jose, and it's the gap between the amount of shelter beds that we have available and the number of unsheltered people who are living on our streets that constitutes the reason that the city is declaring its shelter crisis. The council has declared a continued shelter, shelter crisis each, each year since 2015, with the last declarations on November 27, 2018, when we opened up the OWLS last year, and December 18, 2018, when we started working on the BHCs, which are, which are our Bridge Housing Communities. I'm just going to briefly go over some of the changes that we've made on the OWLS this year. This winter, the OWL will operate at Bascom Community Center and Library and the Roosevelt Community Center, and these two were our most heavily utilized sites from previous OWL operations. OWLS are meant to be low-barrier shelters providing safety from cold weather elements. Each location has a capacity for 30 beds. This program will be funded with our HEAP, which are our state funds, and our Housing Trust Funds, which are local funds. The Housing Department is recommending an amendment to the current OWL agreement with Home First for a number of reasons. First, the city council prioritized strategies that didn't require a procurement process in order to implement programs quickly. Home First is our most experienced operator as they do implement programs like this, and they were the sole operator and responder of our RFP last year. In terms of the changes that we're making this winter, in previous years, OWL has operated during, only during periods of inclement weather, so only when it's really cold and when it's wet and really cold. And it was only on a first time, on a first-come, first-served basis. This year, we're proposing a number of program changes, most notably, we're going to be operating the OWL for six months continuously, making it a referral program and increasing the support available to the people who are spending the night. We're also operationalizing cross-departmental coordination and establishing a framework and metrics for enhanced service levels for the facilities and the neighborhoods. I wanted to just review a little bit about the referral system because that's new for this program this year. Again, in previous years, the OWL is operated by people just showing up, and whoever got there first was the person who was allowed to come in and utilize the facility. The development of a referral process is really a national best practice, and actually, it's been implemented across all of the shelters in Santa Clara County. The referral process provides homeless guests, guests who are living in crisis to achieve some stability by providing a predictable and extended access to a warm, safe place to sleep. Priority will be given to unsheltered individuals who are currently sleeping in or around the OWL. They'll be referred by the City of San Jose outreach providers, homeless people who are living in San Jose, and referrals by the Police Department. This is consistent with the city council direction that you gave us five weeks ago, where you asked us to pilot an invitation zone in neighborhoods where we open interim solutions. So by providing opportunities for people who are living in those neighborhoods, first access, we believe we're, that's consistent with the direction. And again, the benefit of this process is that guests do not need to arrive early and stand in line to be guaranteed a space. And once the site is full, referred individuals will be placed on a waiting list. We've also made some additional changes to the program as a result of the outreach. In previous years, OWL has been a low-barrier shelter designed to bring people in during the harsh winter temperatures, and basically, that's what we provided, a safe, warm place to sleep for one night that was pretty unpredictable on when we would open. So with this one-time state HEAP funding, we're able to add additional services, and those include case management, so everyone who comes in will have an opportunity to be assessed for long-term housing referrals, showers, meals, enhanced security, and storage, which we plan to locate at both sites for the guests and their belongings. Over the past week, we've been working with homeless advocates who have expressed concern that our overall capacity decreased from last year when we opened up 120 beds, of which 30 were for families. I did want to remind everyone, we ended up closing the family facility because the families weren't actually utilizing it, and so we're actually losing 30 slots as a result of the change in the program. We are working with the advocates to identify an overall, a overflow strategy that we can implement when there is inclement weather. And now I'm going to turn it over to Angel.
Thank you, Jackie. So just last month, we, we presented the Annual Homeless Report, and during that meeting, we talked about the need for taking a different approach to bridging our internal work. At that same presentation, we also talked about the intersect that exists between two of the CMO's enterprise priorities, creating housing and preventing homelessness, which is one, and then safe, vibrant, and inclusive neighborhoods and public life. And as, as we've begun to kind of really dissect that work, we're paying close attention to listening to department perspectives, listening, engaging the community and understanding their perspectives, gathering and analyzing data, minimizing bureaucracy, and getting to results that matter, clarifying roles and expectations, and, and making sure that all improvements are data, people, and outcome-driven. And we feel that this, this OWL, the, the two OWLS that we're presenting is a great opportunity to apply this framework. In the area of coordination and collaboration, you can go to the next slide there. In the area of coordination and collaboration, over the past several weeks, the CMO has operationalized and integrated this approach to interdepartmental work. During the Safe Parking Pilot discussion, the direction that you gave us was very clear. You wanted to make sure that as we take on these type of efforts, that we make sure that we were clear in defining the enhanced level of service, and that's what we tried to, to do here. We have coordinated several meetings with department staff to understand issues that have arisen from other iterations of OWLS or other interim housing projects, as well as to forecast new issues that may arise as a result of programmatic changes to nightly OWL operations. We have also coordinated meetings with departments, our program operator, and other stakeholders to better understand and address neighborhood needs. All of that feedback is reflected in the enhanced service model for this program. The CMO will continue to coordinate meetings with these departments as the program is operating to ensure that we address neighborhood concerns in real time.
As we strive to achieve two goals, one related to advancing more housing solutions for our homeless population and the other improving our oper, the other is improving our operations, we also recognize this requires us to collect, monitor, and analyze certain metrics to evaluate the effectiveness of our interventions. As Angel described, the CMO has been working to improve the coordination and collaboration across the organization. This coordination combined with feedback from our partners and the neighborhoods led to a number of enhanced services that we are proposing for both the facilities where these applications are housed, as well as for programs in the surrounding neighborhood. Our staff, in particular, advocated strongly for the need, for the need of additional services for our hosting facilities as they felt these were important community assets needed for all those who attend. As a result of many conversations, the administration is supporting enhanced services for these facilities that include such things as increased maintenance funding, increased janitorial services, monthly power washing to the exterior, and beautification funding for landscaping, as well as 24-hour security for the facility and increased trash pickup. Enhanced services for the surrounding neighborhoods also include proactive litter and trash pickup, illegal dumping sweeps, addressing lighting issues where possible, and also proactive outreach to occupied vehicles. Throughout the program operation, an interdepartmental team will track a number of metrics, as you can see here, and report back on a monthly basis with any changes so that the data can inform future actions or programmatic changes. In the end, to be successful, a number of different actions must happen simultaneously. We must listen to the people we are serving to understand how our programs can better serve the unsheltered populations. We must listen to the community and our partners to understand what is going well and where we need to pivot and grow our neighborhoods. We must collect and analyze data to better understand how qualitative feedback matches our quantitative metrics. We must enhance how we work together internally and listen to the frontline staff. All of these actions will help us to develop better public policy alongside the community. Ultimately, all of these actions will help build trust with our community, which we hope will lead to more housing solutions for our most vulnerable population. With that, the team is ready for any questions you may have.
Actually, I just want to jump in because I do want to thank the entire team. I want to thank the City Manager's Office for jumping in and helping to facilitate the communication, but I also want to thank the librarian Jill, PRNS, and John, and all of your staff for working very closely with us to actually really improve and enhance the program. The police have jumped in, Public Works is coming through by providing some additional services, and then the city council offices who have helped us to facilitate the communication with the neighborhoods and this expansion. It really has taken a team effort and an amazing effort with, you know, we're just a few of the people that worked on this, but there's an amazing group of people who've had to come together to resolve a tremendous list of issues. And I do specifically want to thank Reagan, Kelly, and Vanessa from the housing team who have been working on this issue for a really long time, and we're really happy to have the additional support.
Thank you, Jackie, and Lee, and Angel, and the whole team, you know, for all your hard work and what you've accomplished. Have a couple of speakers, Phil Mastrowcola, Karen Gillette, and Bruce Sullivan.
My name is Phil Mastrowcola. I'm co-founder of the Winter Faith Collaborative. The reason I'm here is to comment on this program, which I think is a, is positive program this year. We understand that you have increased the number of days, and I want to thank the staff, including Housing and City Manager staff, who are talking to us about this. And decrease the, the sites, which is not, not a good, good news, but increasing the number of days, increasing the number of hours, even during the day, is all positive stuff, but it's not enough. And I want to address a proposal I have actually made to both Home First and the Housing staff who have listened, have definitely listened to all of us speaking on this matter over the last couple of months. The concern, of course, is reduction in number of beds overall, the, what is the response for the cold weather days, the extreme weather days, for the most vulnerable guests, meaning families with children, domestic violence victims, elderly over 75, patients who've been discharged from hospitals, and the physically disabled individuals who live outside, and how it will impact this, this population because it's a referral. We have identified a proposal, a few points in the proposal, which is to try to identify expansion space on those extreme weather days, because they, as you have pointed out in the, in the presentation, the aim of this program is to minimize the risk caused by the harsh cold weather months, and especially the cold weather days of those months. And so because of this, we do need more beds. We have offered to Winter Faith Collaborative to collaborate with the Housing Department and Home First to expand some of the church space, and due to the fact that I am happy to operate a shelter in downtown, we will accommodate overflow space on those days that are, have cold weather, extreme weather.
Thank you, thank you, Phil.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Karen Gillette, and I think most of you know my background as a researcher and homeless advocate. We know that this year, 2019, our point-in-time count, as was mentioned, has increased. We have more homeless people in our city than ever before. Previous years, we ran four OWL sites, overnight warming locations, and since this year, you're planning to only run two, I wonder where the common sense is in that, okay? I know somebody said to me the other day, I was walking downtown, Raul, and somebody from the PATH Office said, well, there isn't much common sense these days, and I agreed with her. San Jose should have an OWL in every council district, yes, all 10. The new iteration of the OWLS as defined, which offers more services and services around the clock, then really means to me that they're not OWLS anymore. We do need overnight warming locations for weather, medical, and domestic violence emergencies to help with sheltering of the unhoused. We need a plan for the overflow, which Phil has started to outline, which we will help with, the Winter Faith Collaborative will help assist with, by providing volunteers to provide support services for those people who are in trauma. We need to use common sense, and we need to use some caring and compassion in helping our unhoused. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce Sullivan, Linda Baxter, and Gail Osmer.
Good afternoon, my name is Bruce Sullivan. I live on Canoga Drive, adjacent to the Tully Library. The Tully Library was used, I believe originally for, as an OWL, but only during those days that it was inclement weather, weather was raining, I believe the temperature had to be... I believe the temperature had to be below 50 degrees or 52 degrees. And if it was not raining, 38 degrees. Now you're going to go full-time. I understand that the Tully Road Library Community Center is not on the agenda this evening. However, there are some speakers behind me that wish it to be so. I can only tell you that as a resident in the nearby adjacent neighborhood that we—we're kind of a special place. We actually have residents' porches and their—their front lawns that face the library. And we had several homeless people that weren't allowed to go in because there's only 30 that can be administered per night. And so the rest wind up on our porches or on lawns, laying down, whatnot. And so we just want to make sure that the wealth has spread, so to speak, when it comes to using the various libraries in other districts. District 7 has had quite a few homeless, especially in the Coyote Creek area. I understand as of today that the library—the Tully Road Library will be partnering with PATH and actually helping take the people out of the creek and—and show them where their services are. And that'll happen on the first Thursday, and I believe the third Thursday of each month, for two hours. So the Tully Library is still being used to help the homeless situation, but we just don't want it used as an overnight warming location. It has been used before, and I think it's time the other district step up. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Linda Baxter. That's the county survey that you should take a look at. Some of you quoted some of the statistics. But when you really look at it and you really go down and you look at the people that are living by the creek and living in the tunnel and living, you know, in what's called the enchanted forest, and you know that it's 37 degrees last night, and pretty soon it's going to be 32, and then it's going to be 25, and we're going to lose lives. And I will not stand by anymore. I will not stand by anymore and watch people die of neglect because a bunch of you can't be bothered to do your jobs. And yes, I am shaming you right now because you need it. And I'm angry because my friends could die. My friend Robert could die. My friend Cowboy could die. My friend Angel could die. And all they need is a warm place to sleep for the worst nights. And all you've done is put up 60—60—shelter spots for 6,000 people? Are you absolutely out of your minds? I am a grandmother. I am a citizen. And I will not be quiet. And if it takes embarrassing you every night this winter, I will do it. And you need to open Tully right now.
Thank you.
And you need to each find a spot.
Thank you. Gail? And then I have Adele, who wants to speak.
Good afternoon. So I was here—I've been here for the last four years. The first two years, I thanked you for opening Tully as an owl. Last year, I requested it to be open, but you chose to open Lenninger. Boy, was that a bad, disgusting decision since no homeless people were there. So I'm here again. I'm here again to please. Let's open Tully. We have a 42% of homeless out there, and you only—only want to open two centers? It's a disgrace, and it's just very hard to understand. You have an opportunity to open Tully. We all know why Tully is not being opened. There is one person sitting up there that does not want Tully open. We all know this. You all got my email. The library folks are fine. They don't have a problem. PRNS is fine. They don't have a problem. We have one person, and I don't understand that. You say there's a homeless crisis? Let's open Tully. Tully people live there. If old what's-his-name doesn't want Tully homeless on his porch, then he should open. There's no reason. There is no reason. If you can't open it on Friday, wait a couple of weeks. Get it open. Please. I know you—it's not about—it shouldn't be about the votes. It shouldn't be about the ball field. There is no ball field open this winter. It shouldn't be about reelection. It shouldn't be about going for a state senator or whatever because you don't want certain people not to be on your side or vote for you. You have an opportunity, and people have been asking you. And I—I just—I don't get it. I truly do not understand. Is it about money? You have money. Is it housing? There's one person that does not want Tully open, and I think it's time that we have Tully open. Mayor Licardo said a couple of nights ago on TV, quote, "Public safety is my number-one priority for our residents." Well, I guess the unhoused aren't considered residents of San Jose. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Adele?
Hello. My name is Dale. I am not against overnight—the owl. Let's say owl. I have been here in San Jose for 40 years. What I am against is uncontrolled chaos surrounding neighborhoods for owls. To reiterate earlier points, this is a—for—this is a humanitarian gesture gone bad at the Tully Library and adjacent Little League ball fields. It's an infamous example, still lingering with problems, trash, not to mention human feces in the ball fields, in its parking lot, and the fields. These conditions have turned District 7 community against continuing owl. It's not just one person. It's the community. From credible sources, the mayor has directly pressured San Jose PD to back off on serious enforcement of clearly posted city ordinances at the site, which prohibits activities such as clothing, food distribution, among other things, from entities there without permits. These have been attracting encampments so well any nightly operating owl. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to bring it back to council. Councilmember Sparza.
Thank you. So before I go into some questions and make a motion, I—I would like to address the issue of Tully Library as an owl site. There were some serious issues with that location, which operated for years. And those issues were created—a lot of— those issues were, one, it's a small facility. There was overflow out into the adjacent street, as well as into the parks. Two, in combination with the creek on the other side of it, it's a very open space. So in effect, the community lost the use of the ball fields as critical open space and as recreational space. My community is not resource-rich. Kids come from as far as Santee to use that library. It is a precious resource, and it wasn't working out. We tried it. We did it. We did it for a long time. And it didn't work. And it was then moved to Lenninger, which, by the way, is also in District 7. And as the months come, there might be an owl there or safe parking. We don't know. The city staff will continue their process. I also wanted to address another issue that came up, which is, yes, we are in a citywide crisis. District 7 is not doing nothing. We have the county's largest homeless shelter. In the coming weeks, week, weeks—I'm not sure— whenever it comes up to council, we're going to talk about bridge housing sites. District 7 will be one of two. For a year, District 7 had the only safe parking location. And may yet, once the city process works through, it may be one of three in the city. So I guess it bothers me to hear people from other parts of the city who have strong opinions about a neighborhood in San Jose that doesn't have much and wants to use the resources that they do have. And I want to say that I really appreciate all the work that has led us to this point because by approaching something a little bit differently and by engaging the District 6 community, and I'd like to thank my colleague, Councilmember Dev Davis, who worked with the community to have the community advisory committee. There was a thoughtful approach to that. I'd also like to thank city staff, who used this change as an opportunity to look at how we, as a city, can, one, manage it differently and more effectively, and, two, provide better services to the unhoused residents who rely on the owls, especially not having to worry about day-to-day—a bed day-to-day to have services on-site. It's a genuine system improvement, and we will learn from it, just as we learned from previous attempts. We're going to learn from this. And my hope is that it will make the system better so that we, as a city, will—as we continue to face these challenges, we can keep learning and keep being better. So having that said, I wanted to move—make a motion and move the Mayor Licardo and Councilmember Dev Davis's memo and also Councilmember Raul Peralas's memo about storage—thank you—about storage. I just wanted to make a comment to staff. Home First has offered storage. They're sort of boxes on wheels that are locked. I don't know if you've had a chance to see those yet, but that might be an opportunity to offer some individual storage to the residents of the owls. So—so that's my motion.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Davis.
Thank you. I want to also thank PRNS, the library, housing, and the city manager's office, as well as Home First, for all the coordination and collaboration on this year's owl program. It's unprecedented, and it's already working much better than—than previous times. So Councilmember Sparza mentioned the community advisory committee, which is our vehicle to listen and pivot to improve at Bascom. And I want to talk a little bit about that. But first, I want to thank also the neighborhoods and the businesses around the Bascom Community Center and library. They have been great partners so far, and they—they were actually the—the groups that requested that we have a CAC. So the Community Advisory Committee, we're calling the CAC. It was requested by these residents who care so much for the community center and the library. And they fought for it over many years, first for it to be built and then for it to be open after the Great Recession. And they're still fighting for it today. They're—they're continuing to be involved on a regular basis. So our CAC is a vehicle for constant communication between our city departments, our council office, the community, and Home First. And we will be—we have already met multiple times, and we're going to continue to be meeting throughout the six months. This is a vital resource to ensure that there's a forum for the community and the department representatives to raise their concerns for resolution as we go along because we know this is something we've done before, but not in this way with these enhanced services and with a referral program. And I also want to point out the CAC is made up of neighbors, library and community center users, department staff, Home First, nearby businesses. The city manager's office is included in that department of staff. And then also, when the owl is open, we've already discussed having owl clients be part of the CAC. So we want to bring all the stakeholders together and be transparent. So we, of course, meet on-site. And it's really part of the balancing act that we have to do between the community needs and addressing our housing crisis, as Lee was talking about. It's really important for us to get this right, rather than have—and I know it's important, and I'm very glad—thank you to Phil Mastrowcola and the Winter Faith Collaborative for partnering with us on solutions for the inclement weather and for overflow. But it's really important for us to get this right so we can replicate this going forward. We have a very good understanding at Bascom now, through the CAC, about the contract with Home First, what the referral process is going to look like. But also, it's really important to—to point out, this is a trust-building tool. So we heard from some people who live near Tully, and they don't have trust that this would go well at Tully. We had an owl at Bascom before, and the community didn't say no. They said, "Hey, we've had some issues. Issues A, B, C, D. What are you going to do about them?" So they didn't say no, but they also did say, "We need to have our needs addressed. We need to," as you said, Councilmember Sparza, "be able to use the amenity that we worked so hard to bring into our neighborhood, and that there's nothing else nearby. There's not even a park in that area." Well, there's one little playground that we helped build, but— but there is not large gathering spaces. It's the only space for the community. So we have added—as a result of the CAC, we added security patrol along the owl perimeter. We brought along Delmar High School. They're also part of the CAC. And we brought them along thanks to community input at the first CAC meeting. We've talked about onsite flexibility in the storage based on need. So Councilmember Peralas, I think it's great that you're asking for storage on your site as well. We've already talked about that issue at our CAC, and we'll have it available. So I—I thank Councilmember Sparza for making the—making the motion. I look forward to having our CAC be successful this—this season and for it to hopefully be replicated in future owl programs, but also all the other interim housing solutions that we put forward because I already see the difference from our first meeting to our second meeting, the difference in trust and the increase in trust and the—the optimism that this program will not only help our unhoused residents, but will help our whole community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Camus.
Yes, I—I want to also thank staff for—for looking into this. We need to do a whole lot more. And I—I have to say that—that we are doing quite a bit more than we ever have. When I first came into office, we were spending $2 million a year on—on homelessness services. And now we're—I think we're over $20 million from our own general budget. We—but I want to caveat a—a—a few of these. We are actually taking on more and more responsibility from the county. Homelessness is primarily the county's responsibility. And—and their failure to make things happen is the reason we are being forced to do more and more every day. I—I want to let you know that—the—the county's budget since—for the last five years has grown from $4.9 billion to $8.1 billion, almost doubling, in the same time that we've had a mere $800— an $8 million increase. $800 million increase. We went from $2.9 to $3.7 billion in the same time period. So they obviously have a lot more money to spend. And if you look at their survey, their—42% of the population is—is— And if you look at their survey, 42% of the population has physical or emotional disabilities. 10% have traumatic brain injuries. 35% are alcohol or drug addicted. These are not things that our librarians are able to handle on a daily basis. So I commend the library staff for even taking on this challenge. And I look to, you know, to the county to do a whole lot more. Over the past few years, they have overlooked opportunities to actually take a look at buildings that they owned and did nothing with them. One of them, they turned down $20 million to refurbish a structure that was six stories tall, that it could have been turned into 160 units and been refurbished. Instead, they turned it into a parking lot. I heard recently that they're turning the jail, also going to be demolishing it after they build another jail. Another building that can house 400 people or more, if it's refurbished. And they turned down private money to do so. I don't think that they are taking this problem as seriously as we are, and we need to have a lot more of our partner, whose primary responsibility to handle these challenges, step up to the plate. Let them use their $4 billion extra dollars to help these folks. I recently learned that the county is going to be looking at their empty land as of two weeks ago. We've been asking them to look at their empty land for five years. I don't know what kind of partnership this is, quite frankly. And I need, we need to put, I commend our library staff, and I'm going to vote for this. And I'd probably vote for even more of these centers if necessary. And I'm looking, and I applaud the Winter Faith Collaborative, which we have active in my district. And I'm working with churches in my district to have overnight parking programs. We're not using public dollars. Our churches are stepping up to the plate and actually filling in, and we are creating these overnight parking programs in my district. So, you know, when it comes down to it, I think we need a lot more help. I don't think that we can continue to try to house people that are mentally ill and expect good results. The results that we saw in the library that everybody's talking about not using anymore, these are great challenges, and we need actual, real support from the people who own O'Connor Hospital, own St. Louis Hospital, own the Valley Med. These are all facilities that should be doing a lot more to house our homeless population. Because their homeless population is not just homeless because they can't afford it. 42% of them have mental health issues, according to this. And if we don't do more of that, yes, they will die. But the county has to step up to the plate and do a whole lot more. And I hope the people that are here and talking passionately about this issue will be just as passionate at the county meetings that go empty and nobody speaks to them. And yet, they have $4 billion to work with. Please, ask them to do more.
Thank you. Councilmember Peralas.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And I appreciate the commentary and the individuals that spoke as well. I want to give a big thank you to my community members, similar to Councilmember Davis, around Roosevelt, previously around the Washington Youth Center, for being able to support these efforts moving forward. I think that that's, you know, we're not seeing enough of that, but as Councilmember Davis pointed out, there are some good examples of how we can actually engage our community and work together with them to bring them in as supporters. As we know, that's one of the, you know, sort of hardest points to overcome, whether it's overnight warming locations, safe parking, or really any solution for homelessness. Getting our local community support is one of the toughest challenges. And so I commend Councilmember Davis as well. I think I echo some of the sentiment. Certainly, we want to see these opportunities, not only more throughout the city of San Jose, echo Councilmember Camus's point that, you know, it's not just the city of San Jose, it's throughout our county. We need to see these solutions, and certainly throughout our region. When you see decisions coming from other cities nearby, they could then take a toll on neighboring cities, including ourselves, when we're not all sort of moving together in the right direction, and instead, you know, making decisions that just really impact and pass the buck to somebody else. It doesn't benefit any of us. And that comes right down to these local solutions as well, where we absolutely need to be able to step up, and I look forward to the opportunity in regards to the discussion around dispersion and equity of these solutions. I think we've addressed one point of that, which is the actual resources going into these locations. We have, unfortunately, some lessons learned in regards to, I think, Tully and the safe parking site at Seven Trees. And taking from those lessons learned, we now have, I think, a program in place that is going to be very responsive to the community that is taking on these solutions. And I think this is the kind of robust program we should have when we are bringing these solutions to certain communities. And hopefully, we can continue to have these communities as advocates, use them as rather sort of the negative examples, or examples of failure, examples of success, and then take these to other locations throughout the rest of the city. And so I do look forward to this sort of revamped program of our overnight warming locations. And in addition to thanking my community members, I do want to thank staff for your work on this year, continued growth in regards to making these better and making this solution one that's going to work for all of us. As we know, we don't have the luxury of failure when it comes to addressing this dire situation of homelessness in our city. And so every single failure or setback only fuels the fire for those that are waiting, essentially, for us to fail at these solutions. And so we really have to go at this and ensure that we can be successful. One of the issues for me was in regards to the storage onsite, and I think we will have that resolved, but I want to see if staff can answer what storage might look like onsite for both Roosevelt and Bascom.
Hi, Councilmember Reagan with the Housing Department. So right now, we're looking at Conex boxes, additional Conex boxes, but I think-
Can you describe what the-
Yeah, so a Conex box is, almost looks like a shipping container, large storage box. And within that, we would have space for individuals.
Do you have the dimensions on something like that?
I know that each one takes up about one parking space.
Okay, fairly big. Okay, sorry, you can continue.
So we're looking at adding at least one for storage of people's personal belongings, but I think we'll have to gauge and see if more resources are needed, additional storage.
And that would be one of those at each location?
Yes.
And then what would the storage of their belongings actually go into within this large box?
So I think we're still working that out. Home First has storage lockers that are on rollers. I've seen in other communities, they use bins for each individual.
Okay, yeah, I have done a fair bit of research on this as well, and the solutions can be rather simple and not very costly. The plastic totes that you may see, right, for each individual, you know, a simple, one large container that has, you know, lock on it, and you limit access to these. We made some recommendations regarding to at least, I think, a minimum type of storage or minimum access, which would look like people coming in, having a little bit of access before they go in to use the center, and then having access to the, you know, put some stuff away and take some stuff with them as they leave in the morning. But I really do think that this storage and the access to it is vulnerable, or is very important in regards to the success of these overnight warming locations, especially if we're going to have some of the same repeat customers overnight versus what we had before. You know, if we can make that much easier on these individuals, rather than having to always collect their belongings, they're going to need capability to move them around, and that's when we see individuals using shopping carts or whatever it may be, right, to transport their stuff. If we give them an opportunity to store their, you know, at least their most valuable belongings, some belongings safely, then they're not having to travel every single day with all of those belongings. And so I think this is, it's just really crucial that we get this portion of it. When I looked at the services, this was the only piece, honestly, at the moment that I saw that we were lacking in to not have a solution out the gate. And so I hope we can remedy this, and I want to hear back from our housing staff as soon as you have an idea on the actual solution and what that looks like. Jackie.
So the only thing I wanted to add was that because we're going to have two additional Conex boxes, so we're having one for lost and found, and then we're having one for the actual storage of all the beds and the supplies that they need to operate every night. So we were trying to balance the needs of parking in the area and taking up another spot. So we're certainly happy to provide an additional box. Again, we were just trying to figure out what the right balance was, but we're, again, happy to do it.
The Conex box you described takes up about a parking space. Do you have a height on that thing?
I'm going to say 10 feet.
10 feet.
I think that the-
Can I pause you for a second?
Yeah.
It sounds like we don't need that big of a space for a lost and found. So potentially, right, the same Conex box that we use for lost and found, could we not solve lost and found, just like a school does, also with just one box, like one tote, right? And then use the rest of that space for actual storage? I don't know, I don't know, maybe staff can respond. Did we have a large amount of lost and found over the last four years at these other OWL locations?
So we did. We want to have a mechanism for daytime. What we're hearing from Parks and Rec and library staff is they will encounter daytime fairly significant amounts of items, whether it's an entire shopping cart or bags, that we need to have a place to store and then help people reclaim those belongings.
So that doesn't sound like lost and found. That sounds like we didn't have a solution for storage, right? And so if I was there, I, maybe I'd feel like, oh, I can leave some of this stuff here, right? And so I-
Well, I just want to clarify that they may not be people who are using the OWL, right? We're operating in public spaces where people are coming to access other programs besides the OWL. So it may not be OWL participants. What we're-
But our community centers already have a way to manage lost and found within the community centers.
Can you say that again?
Community centers have a way to manage lost and found within the community centers already, if there's just general public that's using it.
Yes, but not for these particularly large items, Councilmember.
Maybe, give me an idea on what it is that would be considered lost and found, because I don't understand how a particularly large item would be considered a lost and found versus somebody, you know, deliberately is leaving their stuff onsite. That's different than from your traditional lost and found, which is, I accidentally left something behind, right? So maybe we're using the wrong terminology here, but that's not helping to paint a vivid picture, right, in my mind of what you're talking about when you refer to lost and found.
Councilmember, in terms of lost and found, you know, PRNS, for example, with respect to Roosevelt, has a, has kind of a standard operating procedure for dealing with lost and found. So what we'll be doing with this OWL is, one, to the extent that there is a need for managing lost and found, we'll do that. But what we're hearing from today's discussion, and what we've already built into this plan, is that we will make sure that we have access to storage for belongings. And we're going to do that at Roosevelt, we'll also do that at Bascom. Right now, we're working out the details. The one thing we know for sure is that we will have access to storage. The details, we should, within the next 24, 48 hours, have that wrapped up.
Okay, and I think we've resolved that. I actually do, I appreciate that it sounds like we have a solution coming for that. What still just wasn't clear was that it sounded like now we have this large container, right, that we're using for what we're calling lost and found. And that is not clear to me, why, right, we would need all of that. And then the comment that Jackie made, which is, hey, we were trying to be respectful of the actual loss of the spaces, parking spaces. My point was, well then, could we combine those uses unless there was some reason as to why we needed that large of a space for what we're calling, quote unquote, "lost and found"? Sounds like we're not on the same page when we say "lost and found," and you all are talking about something different than your traditional "I left it behind, it needs to go in a little box," so.
Yeah, fair enough. And what we'll do is we'll be customizing kind of the use of that storage based on what the need is.
Okay. And again, it sounds like we do have a solution on that, besides the fact of knowing exactly what it might look like. And so if we can just report that back to myself and maybe Councilmember Davis on what that looks like, and then we will absolutely be hoping that these are very successful models. And then again, we can come back and with the hopes of more financial support, be able to open up more of these locations. We recognize that these are just the temporary solutions. These are not our permanent solutions. But at the same time, when we have so many individuals out in our streets and we don't yet have enough permanent solutions, these temporary solutions are invaluable. And so my office will be there as well to continue to work with the community to see what we need to do to communicate with yourselves, and the operator there onsite, Home First, and to make sure that we address any issues that do come up as they arise. And thank you again for your work.
Thank you, Councilmember Peralas. Councilmember Foley.
Thank you, and thank you, staff, for your report and the information about the OWLs. Can you tell me, there were four. We're not opening Tully. What was the fourth one that we're not opening? Just curious.
It's Alum Rock. Well, Alum Rock, we decided mid-season last year to no longer open because the families weren't utilizing it. And the other site was Leninger.
Okay, so Alum Rock was a family site, and families weren't, okay. I appreciate that homelessness is a citywide problem, that we need to resolve citywide. And in District 9, we don't have an OWL, so I'm opening it up. How do we begin the conversation for opening one in District 9? We have Camden Community Center that's used as the emergency facility for the power shut-off recently. There's good parking there. Of course, we'd have to have, engage the community and get input, but how do we go about, in our district, starting that conversation?
Well, really, when we're trying to identify the best place to cite these, we really like to see where we have a homeless population living, because, you know, they have to get to the site, right? So that's always the first priority. So the first thing is you telling us you're interested, and then we can absolutely look to see what the population looks like around the facility, because as we expressed with the other site that we ended up closing, if we only have a couple of people who are showing up, it's just not a very effective and cost-efficient way for us to provide the service. So we're happy to look at, to see what the population looks like around your facility.
I appreciate that, and I'm not sure that Camden Community Center is the right location in District 9, but because there's not a lot of transportation there, and when I think about the community reporting homeless situations and encampments, it's closer to the creek, so maybe it's the Pearl Avenue Library or some other location on the eastern part of the district. But I just want to put it out there that we all do need to share, we don't have any tiny homes in District 9. It's important for us to all find solutions in our district, so let's have a conversation about where that might be and what you need to get that conversation started. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dev.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So I want to congratulate staff. I do think that it is a step forward and an improvement to move from four part-time OWLs to two kind of longer-term OWLs. On the question of location and citing, I know that we're up against a wall in terms of finding a location for any solution that we want. But I was curious, I see that we keep going to community centers, and in community centers, there's a community who uses it, and often, there can be friction. At the same time, we also have, I guess, reuse centers that we're leasing cheaply to nonprofits and such. Have we considered reuse as opposed to actually open community centers?
Councilmember Depp, we did go through and look at all of our reuse. Many of them don't have the facilities to support it, for example, showers or even good working bathrooms. Most of them don't have the capacity, right? These are 30-person each and many of them, you might be able to do five or 10. And, and we do have community partners in there operating as well, so we are trying to make that balance. You know, ultimately, community centers were never built to be human shelters, but, you know, we're trying to pitch in and figure out how to get through this period of time. So the larger community centers are the ones that are gonna have the kind of space or things like kitchens or things that might be useful versus most of the reuse is small.
Okay, that's fine. I was just curious. I, I wanted to move on to Councilman Paralisis' memo. I commend him for, for thinking about the storage and I think that's extremely important. But I, I noticed that, you know, in, in his memo that we're, we're gonna pass soon, he's asking for Roosevelt. And I think, you know, he's worked it out with Roosevelt community, so I won't push for, for Bascom or other community centers. But I, I guess I am curious about the, the practical implementation of it. The lawyer in me sees a lot of questions about like liability and ownership of the stuff and, and, you know, just the practical implementation of it. I've seen, or I've read that LA, you know, not at their, their shelters, but I think in LA, if you're homeless, you can only carry like a trash bag's worth of stuff around. You can't do shopping carts. I, I think I heard that somewhere. I've been to the tiny homes, not the tiny homes, there's a, there's some sort of shelter in the bus depot down in San Diego and people are like, a couple hundred people are in a huge tent and it's off to the side away from residential areas. And the thing down there is you can't be homeless on the street if you're gonna be near that area. So the, the trade-off was you can be in the, under the tent, but you can't be homeless publicly and the, the city would really enforce the cleanliness of that area. But down there, everybody who stayed in that shelter that I visited has a, basically a trash, like a 15-gallon trash bin that they can put their stuff in and that's what they're limited to, like just their bunk beds and then like a, a bin, 15-gallon, I believe, maybe 30-gallon, but it's a large bin and that's all you get. So I'm, I'm interested in coming up, or staff deciding, best practices for San Jose because I don't want a situation where like over, if you're staying at the owl in Roosevelt, you know, here's what we're doing, but then if you're over in Bascom, here's the other rule for it. I think we should have a consistent, what's within the realm of possibility. I hear Reagan talking about a Connect box and I'm not sure what that is, but it sounds like a portable storage box, like a Coolbox or something. And immediately, I'm thinking, there's gonna be issues there because I don't think if I were homeless or if I were somebody who's handing my stuff off to somebody, I wouldn't want it mingling with other people's stuff. I, I would like to be able to ruffle through a box or something or, or locker or, or 15-gallon bin and know, this is my stuff and I was the last person to touch it. And because it's an owl station, it's not a shelter where everyone is coming back like 30 days a night, you might, you might see frequent faces, but it's not a permanent housing solution for them. I, I don't know that, you know, how do we deal with people who go off and just abandon their stuff? At what point is, are things that we're holding abandoned? You know, access hours, we leave it, give it them access to put away at night, maybe the next morning, but should they have access to it throughout the day? The cleanliness of the items and, and to the extent that there's a public safety, or not safety, but like health and safety type thing in terms of like lice or, or whatever. So there, there are things that I think we need to consider as from a city standpoint and liability and, and just health and public safety. Although we should do this, I just think there should be rules that we think about and what is the extent of our liability. So whenever staff comes back to report on this the next time, I would hope maybe to include in the motion to report back on whatever standards we find are best practices within the capability of San Jose to implement this. And I would like to add that to the motion if at all possible. Raul, you okay?
So when are you looking to, when could you come back and report?
Whenever the next natural timeline is.
Well, I'm asking them.
Oh, okay. Oh, all right.
Well, we're gonna have to report back sooner versus later 'cause on the HEEP funding, so. Since we're funding this from HEEP, so you'll see something by the end of the fiscal year.
So a report by, by June, by the end of June. So yeah, I'm amenable to adding that to the motion as a secondar?
Thanks. That's all I'll yield.
Thank you, Councilmember Reines.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. My question is around some of this overflow. I'm concerned that, especially if families who are staying in the safe parking, will transition into somewhere inside. And I, I believe I heard from Councilmember Davis that there, there was some discussion about having the overflow go to some of our faith-based communities. Is, how, how concrete is that referral or that overflow? What is the process for that?
Sure. So before I let Reagan talk about or address any of the overflow issues, I just wanted to remind you that we don't, we no longer have a safe parking program for families and we've already transitioned all of the families into motels, so we don't anticipate...
Yes, and I didn't mean our safe parking, but there's still safe parking within the faith-based, the Winter Faith Collaborative that we don't, obviously, we don't run those, but those folks will wanna go inside. I'm assuming that they'll go inside and, and probably into the church that they're, if the, if it is indeed a church that they are parking at, but if it isn't, then those folks will look for somewhere else and I'm thinking they'll look for our shelters. And so ultimately, my question was, could some of these places be a, a way for some of those folks who are doing the outreach, to outreach to them and figure out whether there's somebody who's not gonna make it into the church or there, you know, the, the parking lot doesn't have access or that church doesn't have access to, to, to any inside accommodations during the winter? That they could also be on a priority list or, or actually be acknowledged as, because I'm guessing that they may not be the folks that, that these other outreach folks are gonna connect with.
You're right. They probably would not be the focus of it, but I would, again, just on the family side, we probably would try to get them into a hotel if it was a short-term, you know, overnight freeze of some sort than to put them in another facility that would not be able to accommodate a family. So I'll let Reagan take it from there though, but I just want to assure you that our solution on the family side is to really get people into a better living situation.
Great. I'm really happy to hear that 'cause I was hoping that, that we would probably suggest the, I was gonna suggest the hotel, but I'm glad you came, you, you said it before me. Reagan, I think you were gonna add something.
So just to add on the referral process, what Phil Mastercola and I have been discussing is when we know there's a period of inclement weather upcoming, very cold or very cold and wet, that we would start planning cooperatively with the Winter Faith Collaborative on who has availability to take people. We would do this in coordination with Home First and start talking about what their waitlist looks like and what the need is and sort of develop the plan to address any cold weather sort of periods coming up.
Great. And would we also include some of the, I know we're, we're just beginning this partnership with McKinnevento, not begin, we've had a partnership with them, but I think the partnership with them is, is, is deepening. And so I'm hoping that, that those families within the school districts across San Jose can also be some of those referral sources for the shelters. Again, I know that, that preferably we want them at a hotel because I think that's a, a much better place for families, but if, if that was impossible, that these shelters would also be a backup for that.
Yeah, I think we can absolutely have that communication with our school district representatives to know that what, make sure they know what resources are available.
And can I ask the maker of the motion, what the motion is on the floor? Councilmember Sparza?
Sorry, I'm de tasking. So the measure on the floor is to accept Mayor Licardo and Councilmember Davis's memo and to accept Councilmember Raul Paralis's memo. And then the third component is to report back to the city council on best practices by the end of the fiscal year.
Okay. You know, I won't add to the motion, but if we could just have that commitment that we'll stay connected to the schools, I think that would suffice for me. Jackie, with that, I see you're shaking your head, so yes.
Yes.
Awesome. Great. Thank you so much. And, and thank you once again for, for the work that you're doing to make sure that our folks are, have a, a warm place to stay. I know this is a tough task to undertake because we don't have the capacity to have everybody come inside. And so I know there's gonna be some lessons learned and, and I, I hope that while we're going through this, that there's some flexibility also to take a look at some alternatives while we, while we just work through some of the, the issues that we're gonna see. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sparza.
Yes, I actually, there was one thing I wanted to bring up, which was the, I had a question about the, given that it's, that we have declared the homelessness crisis, has anyone looked at the rotunda? Was that looked at to offer the rotunda as an owl?
We actually have... From you or Councilmember Paralis as well? Yeah. We have looked at the rotunda and the challenge with the rotunda has been there's community events and it's rented out and so we've, we've not been able to overcome the fact that the city's renting out and has commitments for it.
And Councilmember Paralis, could you talk a little bit about some of your work on that?
Yeah, I think it was four or five years ago when we first brought up the opportunity of overnight warming locations that I saw in a couple other cities that they were utilizing their city halls. And so I quickly offered up the opportunity to Jackie and our city manager that we could utilize within District Three, our own city hall being that it was in, certainly it's a, it's a asset of all of ours, but residing here in, in District Three. And we did look into that and ultimately, that was not the location that we chose. We ended up choosing the first year, the Washington Community Center or U Center and the Biblioteca. And so we had two locations within District Three that first year and subsequently still have not utilized it, but we've had a location in District Three every year. I'm still not against utilizing the rotunda and would be more than happy to, to have this as another location. I think prior to having two locations within District Three, and staff has heard me say this, when we, when we sort of moved on from having the two locations right next to each other, then I asked that we spread the level a little bit more throughout the city. So before we had the, a, a second location, whether it's city hall or somewhere else, I would prefer that we do have locations throughout some of the other districts in the city. So I, I wouldn't necessarily support it today, knowing that Roosevelt is still in operation, but potentially in, in the future if we're no longer at Roosevelt.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. That's all our, Councilmember Reines? Last minute comment. So I know Councilmember Foley was mentioning an interest in exploring sites in her district and so what I was curious about is, does that need to be explicit direction to go explore an additional site within the existing motion or? And that's to Jackie or Lee or whomever?
So we're always exploring potential sites as new possibilities, so, you know, I, I have a list of them and we're continuing and if there's a desire for us to continue to look, that is always something we're ongoing. I think, you know, frankly, our challenge is we would want to open up something sooner versus later because of the season and the staff capacity to do the level of outreach that would be necessary to have a new owl. We're still working on safe parking, the BHCs, so, you know, to the extent it requires that level of staff work, it just makes it very challenging.
I would add, we just, we would need to identify funding for any additional sites for this winter.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you. So that's it for my colleagues. We have a motion on the floor. Let's vote. Thank you, staff, for all your hard work.
Okay, good afternoon, Vice Mayor and members of the council. I'm Ryan Doolin, Director of, Deputy Director of Fire Department and with me today I have the program Partners for Fireworks Deputy Fire Chief Hector Estrada with the Bureau of Fire Prevention, Rachel Roberts, Deputy Director of Code Enforcement, Captain Michael Kim with the Police Department. And in the second row, I have Rosario Neves, Director of Communications with the City Manager's Office. We are here to present on item 8.1, fireworks ordinance works, work plan status report, which was referred to the council from the Public Safety Finance and Strategic Support Committee back in August of this year. The posted memos lay out all of the activities that occurred since last year's update and some topics raised during the PIS-FIS committee meeting, so I'll briefly go over some highlights, what the data is showing us, some new activities that were implemented this year, lessons learned, and then next steps. And there'll be a time for questions and, and some discussion at the end of that. This season, we wrapped up our third year of the program and have moved the needle ever so slightly in the, in a positive direction and operationalized activities in the areas of education and outreach and reporting. These are the program components. You'll see education, outreach, reporting and enforcement as those program components that we agreed on back in 2017 as we moved the initiative forward. You'll see in the next step plan, a focus on the hardest and, hardest and area most cities are trying to figure out, which is enforcement. What the data is showing us specifically during this past Fourth of July reporting period is, we're doing relatively well, being a city of our size, with zero medical emergencies and 15 fires related to fireworks. Of those 15 fires, seven were vegetation, one structure other than a building, two trash fires and five small outside fires. Those small outside fires are basically crews arriving on scene and looking or finding debris of existing fireworks in a street and we're able to put that out with basically a minimal amount of water. We did see a 75% increase in actionable reports from the 2017 Fourth of July reporting period with seven online citations and 150 warning issued to property owners. However, we do continue to see online reports that do not contain enough information for the city to take an action. In addition to the online reporting, police department made two arrests on the field, one field citation and confiscated 300 pounds of fireworks. As far as the new activities implemented for 2019, code enforcement solicited feedback directly from over 600 community users of the online reporting tool with a survey. This was the first time conducted as a follow-up to what the community had shared with us and also that we reported at council last year. We partnered with Andrew P. Hill High School, Lay High School and Dartmouth High to display campaign messaging on their digital boards this year, was the first time we were able to and committed to doing outreach to the schools in our area. We added Google translation services to the online reporting tool that allows our residents to interact with the tool in over 100 different languages. We followed up with the reporting parties to share with them if the report resulted in a warning or citation. to share with them if their report resulted in a warning or citation, and this was one of the issues that neighborhood had shared with us, that they did not know the disposition of their reports as they turn them into the city. And lastly, our messaging campaign has been hit with the surrounding communities that we have partnered with Santa Clara County Fire Department to expand it throughout the region. Here are some examples, in addition to the 35 fire station that displayed banners, the three PD facilities that also constructed banners on their facilities, libraries where we had pop-ups, community centers, BTA buses, and light rail where we had significant type of outreach and education. So here are the pop-ups and the regional messaging that was adopted by our partners. Those included City of Campbell, Saratoga, Los Altos, Santa Clara County, Santa Clara PD, Palo Alto Fire Department, and Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors. Next is, here is the social media kit site, which has been a hit with the neighborhood associations. I've done a lot of outreach personally, going to quite a bit of neighborhood associations, as well as the Neighborhood Commission, and some of, and actually some of your offices have used these tools as well. We make it easy to use our photos and pre-scanned messages, essentially, all you have to do is cut and paste and help us get the word out. This info is also available in multiple languages, as you can see by the link, so it's pretty much a click site where you can get the information. 2019 lessons learned show high percentage of reports contain insufficient or no information, which I mentioned before. The public is asking for more police presence and enforcement. An effective messaging is critical to change behavior. So these are all things that we have learned in 2019. We took the good ideas from the community survey, which was conducted by PBCE, so I wanted to just thank them for doing that outreach and doing all the analysis that comes with that. And we use that information to tackle some of the areas which we will be implementing in this upcoming year, which is just around the corner. This takes us to the next steps. We'll continue to extend the reach of our outreach and education activities, one being extending to more schools. We're making contacts in the different areas and districts, so if that's somewhat, something I can ask for from the council district offices is to help us do more of that. I think it's actually moving the needle. Implementing year-round reporting of the online reporting tool, so we worked with PBCE on what it would take to actually extend the reporting tool and make it available to our residents online all year round, so we'll be doing that. Producing a tutorial video so the public is clear on what type of information is needed for the city to take an action. So what we heard from the Stop Illegal Fireworks group is, you know, the residents just don't know how to use our tool. So we think it's pretty simple. We've worked with a lot of the language with Bloomberg, and we think that producing an online tutorial that residents can actually see would walk them step through step on the reporting tool would be helpful. The next one is explore integration with the My San Jose app to provide a one-stop mechanism to report issues to the city. So this was another one that was reported by the community is just, you know, knowing where to go to actually report a violation, and also having right now a separate reporting tool is causing some issues with residents. They just want a one-stop kind of shop to communicate with the city. And then the last thing is the enforcement, and I'll go ahead and turn the enforcement activities planned for next year over to Captain Kim to discuss.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor and Council Captain Mike Kim from the Police Department. So our Police Department will continue to have on-duty patrol neighborhoods when free. Mind you, that Priority One and Priority Two calls will be a priority, therefore not allowing a whole lot of officers available. Second thing is that we do plan and anticipate our Special Operations Bureau to be patrolling for public safety and traffic control, both the Almeden Lake area and downtown. But in lieu of that, we do offer overtime to officers on July 4th. This year, we only had two officers volunteer, so next year, we are looking at different incentives to try and entice more officers. Hotspot policing in certain areas. This year, we asked officers to, in their free time during that reporting period, to drive around the areas to try and deter fireworks or fireworks use. Next year, we're looking at piloting a possible spot based on statistics, online reporting, and calls for service. So instead of going to multiple hotspots, we're going to look at one hotspot, and then what we'll do is we'll evaluate the effectiveness after that. We are going to use overtime officers for that hotspot enforcement, so it depends on how many officers volunteer to come in for hotspots. In regards to sting operations, I know during the August PIS-FIS, it was mentioned in our memorandum. We further evaluated sting operations, and this is what we came up with. Special Operations would be the staffing personnel that would be doing that enforcement. But by taking Special Operations out of their primary enforcement of aggravated assaults, gang enforcement, and narcotics, we would be utilizing them to conduct the fireworks sting operations, therefore taking them away from their primary duties. We also learned that a lot of the fireworks sales are occurring online and outside of San Jose, therefore really not being effective or having any impact by utilizing our Special Operations Bureau. So in 2020, we will not be pursuing sting operations. And lastly, we looked at administrative citations. So currently, officers must on view a fireworks violation in order to cite them. We know that the San Jose immunity code allows administrative citations, so if someone is using fireworks at a particular residence or a party, they can cite the owner. At this point, we have not been trained in those type of administrative sites, but in lieu of that, we are going to work with planning, billing, and code enforcement to actually have officers report these violations online using the online reporting tool. We believe that because the officers will be primarily dispatched to Priority One and Priority Two calls, that is going to actually take precedence over the administrative citations. And that's it.
That concludes the presentation. I do want to thank a couple of key city staff for their ongoing contributions to this program. Maria Diaz Perez and Oscar Correia of Code Enforcement, Edgar Martinez and Joe Joseph, and Dean Whipple from the Fire Department, Stop Illegal Fireworks Committee, which was instrumental in some of these dialogue, Mount Pleasant Neighborhood Association, and D3 Next Door Community Council. That concludes this presentation. With that, we're here to take any questions.
Thank you for that presentation and all the hard work that you're doing to try to address this issue. Obviously, our council offices in the community has been very vocal in terms of addressing this issue. I want to ask the chief to come down and answer a quick question, or it might not be that quick. Chief, obviously, there's a strong demand to address this issue and apply additional resources to address the fireworks enforcement issue. What are some of the hurdles or obstacles that you're facing to be able to accomplish that?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, for the question. I mean, this just gives us an opportunity once again to really educate, and I realize the community is frustrated with the issue with fireworks, but it gives us an opportunity to somewhat educate as to what we're doing as a department with our staffing. So first and foremost, and I know this council knows this, is we'll talk about our overall staffing levels. Obviously, and I'll tell you this, very positive signs, you know, for the first time in nine years, whether it be Deputy Chief, Assistant Chief, or Chief, I finally saw us at our allocated staffing levels. Now, granted, 146 of those are in training, but I think we all realize and know for a city of this size that we're nowhere near where we need to be with regards to our patrol staffing. That's the first thing. Second, really, when we look at calls for service, the Fourth of July in 2020 actually lands on a Saturday. A usual Saturday in the summer has more calls for service than the Fourth of July did this year on a Thursday. The summer months is usually impactful for us as well. With limited resources, it's difficult to promise devoting resources for simply fireworks enforcement when during the summer we know that violent crime tends, trends tend to tick up, and we may need to pay attention to that and apply additional resources to that. In addition to calls for services, as we've made mention before, our special operations is taxed as we split them up for the downtown major event that happens and for the Almeden Lake major event that happens. And we say that because obviously our special operations are the units that also would impact violent crime if that affects the city. As I mentioned, Saturday, the Fourth of July is very busy, and officers have to be available to respond to priority violent crimes for service, and that's what they would do on a normal summer night, much less the Fourth of July summer Saturday. I'll be honest with you, I struggle every once in a while because I've seen some of the documentation from frustrated community members that I understand. I live in the city as well, and it frustrates me also. But I struggle to think of what neighborhood I would pull officers from to concentrate on fireworks when all of our neighborhoods need their officers patrolling their neighborhoods for violent crime and other issues and answering the 911 call for service. And I simply just, in good conscience, couldn't imagine and could not pull those officers away from our neighborhoods that need them. You know, I've seen some of the things that smaller cities do with regards to callback or canceling days off, et cetera. Well, there's two issues with that for us. One of the issues, quite frankly, from a philosophical perspective, is the morale issue. God bless you, is the morale issue. You know, we're talking about, and we've talked about this, and I won't belabor it, but we've talked about a department that has been taxed, overworked, amazing men and women that do an incredible job for a department that should be much, much more well-staffed than we are, and to tell them that I'm going to cancel days off and call them back for fireworks enforcement, that would not be positive for the department. In addition to that, there's MOU issues. I can only call back the department four times a year. Actually, that was an increase from two times a year that luckily we were able to negotiate with the union to be able to call officers back. Now, we need to save those callback times for emergencies. I mean, you know, whether that's the earthquake or another flood, or another major convention of some sort, those, we need to make sure that we're prepared, and we save those when we need them. That's why the only other option that we have is overtime. Now, we saw that last year, we only had two individuals who signed up for the overtime, but it's the only reasonable option to conduct fireworks operations. But when we talk about our overtime and we talk about the lean department that we are, we're filling a lot of holes. And, you know, the staffing that we have, we need overtime to fill those holes that are priorities that our community demands us to do. And right now, and I was sitting with my staff the other day, we came up with at least almost a dozen, you know, right now, we're doing water district creek enforcement overtime that we need officers to do. We're having new funding that's coming up, conducting auto burglary. The enforcement's going to be done, the enforcement portion of that is probably going to be done on overtime. We have two aspects to our guardian car program. One, to protect schools from active shooter, and the other one to protect events from active shooter. That's done on overtime. We have quality-of-life cars that each of your divisions have, that officers work overtime to deal with your quality-of-life issues. We have the downtown, we have our gang cars that when gang crime spikes up, we have gang cars that come out, and those are done on overtime. We have hotspots, we have the downtown, sorry, we have the downtown walking beats overtime. We have hotspot, we have the hotspot walking beats, four of them throughout the city now, overtime. We're looking for funding for the racer enforcement, which we're about to hear, overtime. There's a new grant opportunity for $150,000 for railroad enforcement that we're looking at as well. That'll be done on overtime. Entertainment zone cars, overtime. And prostitution operations, overtime. It's amazing, I just came back from a major city chiefs conference, and I was trying to explain, trying to talk to the other chiefs about how we keep our crime rates low, and they ask, well, how many officers we have? I just get a head shake and smiles. And it's because these officers do so much that at times, it's just tough to have something else, an additional thing on our plate. Our plan, once we have a shift change, we have shift change once a year now, once the new year becomes and we have the shift change, we have a lot of younger officers that are coming on the department, that are getting out of the FTO program. I'm very hopeful that I will message and the chiefs will message the fact of how important it is to sign up for these overtime opportunities, to concentrate on hotspot areas. And I'm very hopeful with preparation that we will get more volunteers to do this type of enforcement. But again, we have a lot on our plate. These men and women continue to amaze me, and I have no doubt that we'll have a better turn, well, I don't want to say I have no doubt, but I'm hopeful that we'll get a better turnout and more volunteers to conduct this type of enforcement next year. But really, the only options that we have are really with all the priorities that this department continues to put on its plate, we have to concentrate on those things.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Councilmember Peralas.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you to our staff for your work on this. And as you'll see, Chief, that's one aspect we're not asking for in regards to, you know, an increase, I think, in prioritization of enforcement, recognizing the priorities that we do have. As painful as it may be for some community members to hear, fireworks are just not as high of a priority to be addressing as many of the other crimes that are being committed throughout our community. And so I agree with you on that and look forward to the day that we are adequately staffed for a city our size so we can actually address some of these needs. In the meantime, though, as you'll see in the memorandum that I co-signed onto with my colleagues, we are certainly looking at other opportunities that we can do to address this. We have had some success now with the reporting tool, so the hope is to increase that success. But then in addition, in what was brought up in committee in regards to this social host ordinance, I appreciate staff's looking into this, the analysis in the memorandum that was drafted back, to explain sort of the nuanced difference between our policy and this social host ordinance. I personally, and I appreciate my colleagues as well, still think that there is a benefit there, and so that's within our direction. And albeit knowing that this is a policy change, directing that to priority setting. So in the meantime, no other direction, but I will make the motion then to move the memorandum co-signed by myself, Mayor Licardo, Councilmember Diop, Arrenas, and Camus.
Thank you, Councilmember Sparza.
I actually just had a couple of questions. On the reporting and outreach slide, will the outreach be year-round as well as the reporting?
So I think those efforts, basically on the backend, are happening all the time. So I've been actually reaching out to the Neighborhoods Commission and using that forum to actually get out to the Neighborhood Associations, and we're also working with our regional partners on a continuous basis. So I think, you know, in the shadows, that's happening, and the messaging is happening, there's no change in our fundamental message. So it's just looking at new distribution channels to get the message out, and looking at partners that we can partner with on an ongoing basis. One thing that we've really are trying to focus on is getting the message to the schools, but also before they go out on holiday. So those are things that we're looking at to explore.
So that it goes home with the kids in May?
Yeah, like a month beforehand. We've been right on that cusp of when they go on vacation, and also trying to engage the principals and so forth in those school districts to actually get the message up on the board when they have a whole bunch of other messaging that they need to do before the kids go on holiday.
So I would actually encourage you to do that year-round. We talk about Fourth of July, but maybe it's just like a District Seven, or District Eight, or District Five thing, or, you know, I don't know. But, you know, there's Super Bowl, there's Tet, there's like sports events, there's generally a Saturday night. Sometimes I heard fireworks going off in the neighborhood this weekend, and I thought, was there, maybe it was a birthday, I don't know. But, you know, to just keep trying throughout the year to get that message out. And is that messaging multilingual?
It is. So we are putting it in Spanish, Vietnamese, and English.
Okay, okay, that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Arrenas.
Thank you. So first of all, I just want to thank you for all the work that you've been doing. I've been sitting on the Public Safety, our PIS-FIS committee since I started, and I've seen how this has developed over time. And we've learned lessons from the previous year, and we've taken those lessons and actually worked on them and made them part of our solutions for the following year. And so I want to acknowledge that part of, I think, part of the success is the engagement and the outreach that you've all been doing. It's been very effective. I look forward to seeing more of those. I look forward to seeing more of those messaging on the billboards for those high schools and schools and churches that have a lot of high traffic. And anyways, I think that that has been very effective. We see the messaging at the community centers, we see it at the libraries. It's hitting all around. So now we're at the point where, I think even in the survey that you all did, part of what those participants, some of those participants had done some online reporting themselves, right? So whether, you know, those things moved on or not, they just did an online report. And those folks said, I think the number one issue was the enforcement, right? So we're still at that crossroad where we're educating our community and that is effective. We have the tools, the online tool, and I'm glad to see that, that we're going to have it all year-round. And actually, I have a question about that because I think having it mobile-friendly will be very effective all year-round, right? Until we get into the new My San Jose app version and they get to update it there. So I think we're doing all the right stuff. We just don't have enough resources, right? If we had additional police officers, then we could do all of that, the combination of enforcement, the combination of just having the safety patrol, the presence of it, right? As we all know that we all slow down when we see you on the streets. So it's the same during fireworks season, but we're competing with so many other crimes during that time period. And I know there is an elevation of crimes during 4th of July that fireworks may not compete with, right? But it's still, you know, for our communities, it's still the most visible one, right? That may cause harm to their homes and to their children and to their pets. We've heard it before. So I, you know, I look forward to having this go on to priority setting. I'm not sure that we have, even if it goes into priority setting and moves forward, we still are, we're still with a lack of resources. So no matter what we do, I mean, we could really increase some of the engagement pieces to kind of balance everything. But the truth is, if they don't see you, Chief, if they don't see your officers out there and we don't crack down on some of these folks, and I think we've done that in these past years, that folks feel like, well, you know, I can go faster on the freeway because we know that there isn't any more, there isn't enough resources for police officers to give us traffic tickets, right? They're busy with something else. And I think this is the same, the same attitude for some of those folks who continue to break the law and to have fireworks in their respective communities. And I think they see that. They put two and two together, right? So I think however it needs to happen, I know that there's so many, so much more on your responsibilities, Chief. I say that we do this maybe for one year and make an example of some folks one year where we have a lot of enforcement, whatever that year may be, and, you know, we can plan it out. So that way, folks know to expect that this is what they're going to see maybe each and every time. They don't know. They don't know whether the next year, we're going to have the same type of enforcement. Maybe we'll have a little bit less, but they won't take that chance and they won't take that risk. At this point, they know that we're lacking on resources and so I think they continue to, like I said, they continue to, with their own criminal enterprise and selling the fireworks. So I think it has to get to a point where we have this enforcement, we have this visible patrolling of our community in order to really make the other strategies more effective, the outreach and the education. I mean, those things, none of those things stand alone and I know that I'm singing to the choir here. But I think in the end, it's going to come to just really having maybe one or two years where we just have a project or a program where we have a lot of crackdown on those fireworks in hopes that it'll prevent for future years and maybe from there, it can just really slow down and take those resources back to where they really need to go in that long list of priorities that you've mentioned, Chief. But I do think that we need to, until we get to that point where we're actually enforcing and patrolling in the way that residents fear for us to do, that we may not see the results that we want. It just, it's not going to get there and you are all working really hard to make everything else work. And we just need to figure out how to make this work in terms of patrolling and enforcement. But I completely understand that our police officers are exhausted, that they've, they're already on overtime and so demanding them for additional overtime is just sometimes unreasonable. But we have to figure out, and this can happen in priority setting, we can figure out where this is a priority where we're going to shift some resources just to make it happen and then find a way to lessen some of those resources in the following years. But anyways, I wanted to say thank you for all the work that you've done. I'm glad that the online tool is going to happen all year-long and that's going to be mobile-friendly. My question to that is that I think at this point is only going to be in English. And when I suggested that in PISFIS, I was hoping that we would be able to have at least, you know, our three standard languages or availability. I don't know if there is that possibility for the online reporting tool.
So that's what we have actually changed this year. It's actually supports over 100 languages. So that was just implemented the last 4th of July, right before that reporting cycle. So that will be the standard going forward.
Yes, I realize for, so that would be, so the mobile-friendly will also have the capacity for all those languages?
So we're working with City IT right now, Michelle Tong on, or Thong, on the mobile-friendly of the existing site. And then we are going to be exploring the use of My San Jose integration in the future. So I'm not sure what the capability of the My San Jose app is, but current, the current reporting tool, we're going to make that more mobile-friendly. And then that will support over 100 languages right now. So the future integration, I think, is open for discussion and probably capability. Those are all going to be instrumental conversations that have to happen and timing.
I appreciate it. 100 different languages in terms of capacity, that is absolutely thorough. So thank you so much for all the great work that you're doing and I look forward to discussing this once again during priority setting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Foley.
Thank you. This really is an enforcement issue, a lack of resources on the enforcement side. And I'm not suggesting that, Chief, you should pull off your officers to go and police illegal fireworks. But I am concerned that we put out the education and the information about the increased use of the app and how easy the app's going to be used and you can report illegal fireworks here and then nothing gets done. And so what will happen is the community then through next door will start complaining. I reported to such and such on the My San Jose app or whatever app and nobody did anything. So eventually, when that happens, the illegal fireworks are just going to continue on. And I'm not allocating at all, Chief, that you do anything different. If I, burglary is occurring next door to me or you're reporting illegal fireworks, I'd rather you take care of that than anything. That's your job to keep us all safe. But it's a lack of resources and until we have adequate resources, the ability that we have to report illegal fireworks, that's great, but the community's going to learn that we're really not going to do anything about it. We could all give you examples. I can give you an example of a school, when I was a school board member, they have a tremendous illegal firework presentation. They've been doing it for years. And I've actually reported it a few years ago to no avail. The difficulty with that school site is next day, there's a preschool that has a summer camp there and these, all of these un-dispensed fireworks still there on the site. So we've got unsafe situations that are occurring that aren't necessarily being tracked, followed up on. And I'm not suggesting you do anything different, it's just a little bit of a frustration on my part that, I get while we're doing this, I get having an app, but I think revisiting it in a year or so and saying, you know, maybe this isn't just working and we really just want to educate people on how dangerous illegal fireworks are to them. I have a question for you regarding the Rotary fireworks or the downtown fireworks. It's potential that they will be going away this year. Rotary has indicated that they may not be stepping up this year for the fireworks. So do you consider if that happens, what's the likelihood that we'll see an increase in illegal fireworks?
So Councilmember, I wasn't aware of that, so that's the first time that I'm hearing that. I also want to go back and clarify, the pilot that PD will be doing on issuing administrative citations is actually working with code enforcement, which will allow the officers, if they're at a scene and observe fireworks coming from private property, they will be able to use the reporting tool. And a warning or citation will be issued, just like we do with the regular residents, to the property owner at that time. So it's not like it will just go into this black hole and we're just receiving the officer's report for reporting purposes. They will also be issued warning and citation based on the same criteria. We will be working with code enforcement to figure out a way to identify those officers. FIRE actually does this right now. If there's a company that arrives on scene, they're able to use the reporting tool. We take a badge number, put it in the reporting tool itself, and then code enforcement is able to take that as a citing officer and issue a citation or warning. So it's not like it's just going to be used for reporting. So I wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
And then the follow-up question.
Appreciate that, thank you.
On the Rotary Club, it's the first I'm hearing of it, so I'd have to, you know, have internal conversations and follow-up on that as far as what the result might be. Are there other potential events that could happen? Somebody else could step in and actually do the same type of event that the Rotary Club currently does?
And I bring that up as a Rotarian, a member of that club and having conversations with them very recently about their concerns about active shooter situations and how that might impact and their concerns with whether they want to do the fireworks again. They may still decide to go forward, I don't know, but I put it out there as a possibility. And that is good to know about code enforcement. What do you do on public property, though? In the case of illegal fireworks that are being shot off at a school, for example, that's public property, so you're not going to find the school district because they're not doing it. It's some individual who is there. So how would that be handled?
So that is a challenge. I'll let Rachel Roberts go ahead and address that issue.
Thank you, Councilmember Foley. So code enforcement does not have authority over public property. We can only conduct enforcement on private property. I think in that situation, it would become more of a criminal citation where the party that's engaging in the firework activity would have to be identified and then a citation could potentially be issued.
That is accurate. Unless the officer actually sees them firing the fireworks or talks to the person and is able to enview the possession of the fireworks, they would not be able to be cited.
Okay, thank you. How are, that answers my questions about school sites then. How were the three schools selected for the electronic billboards? I note that two of them were in District 9, so I'm glad District 9 stepped up. But there are schools all over the city that have electronic billboards and was it a timing issue? Was it, what, how did, do you need more help getting access to the schools?
Yes, we need more help getting access to the schools. So I had reported previously at PISFIS and City Council, if you guys have any contacts for the schools, they actually operate independently with their school, electronic school boards, so it's not like a centralized, kind of, we contact one and they're able to distribute out to their school districts. Our PIO at the time, Mitch Matlow, had contacts with these schools and basically did some outreach and just got ahold of the principal and they were more than willing to work with us on the messaging, getting it sized correctly for their digital board because not all of them can fit our electronic graphics. And that's all it took. So we are ready and willing to work with any school that will post our graphics or our messaging. So it's just about making key contacts with that. We've also reached out prior to the school districts and it just had not made any progress until this last year.
Very good. I'm happy to help you with the superintendents and the schools in District 9. I have pretty good access to them and I think they're very receptive on how they can be good community partners and I'm happy to help with you, as I'm sure all of my colleagues would be happy to help you in accessing the education. And to me, that's what this is all about, is educating our community that safe and sane fireworks, well, they don't really exist anymore, do they? But go to the show in Almaden Lakes and you'll see a beautiful show down there. Or go down to the Rotary Fireworks Show, should it occur next year. I appreciate all of that. So let me see if I have any other questions. I actually think that's it. And I appreciate that this is a difficult issue. I remember a couple of years ago, we went over to the History San Jose to watch the fireworks from that location and coming back, we drove down Phelan and there were illegal fireworks going all over the place. And you wouldn't be giving them citations because they're not, they're on the streets. They're not, there's no homeowners and they're not in front of someone's home. They were literally in the street. Councilmember Sparza's smiling because she probably remembers that. We drove through, I was driving, it felt like I was going through a war zone, watching all these fireworks going off. So it is definitely a problem. I know people with pets have freakouts during, anytime fireworks are let off. So it's a serious problem and I don't mean to make light of it, but I also don't want to pull PD away from more serious crime to deal with that. So I appreciate that it's a code enforcement issue. Thank you.
And I just want to follow up on one item, Councilmember, is that we have actually made quite a few strides in the evidence and actually having solid ways to then follow-up and issue a citation and warning, which in 2016, we weren't quite there as a city. So we are not moving backward, we're only moving forward now. So that is probably one of the key instrumental things, is all of our citations and warnings are now meeting that legal bar to move forward in the process on that.
I appreciate that. One other thing, have you considered, like with the sideshows, we passed an ordinance where we would, the police department could ticket a spectator. Have we considered that as an option, rather than the person firing the fireworks, dealing with the spectators? Or should we consider it?
Not that I'm aware of. We are not citing any spectator. It's the property owner that we want to hold responsible for that on private property in accordance with our municipal code.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Depp.
Thank you. So I just want to, yeah, reiterate, sorry. I just want to reiterate the point that the police chief kind of drove home. I think when I'm out there talking to residents as well, we talk about, you know, not having resources and everyone just kind of shakes their head. At the same time, we've been saying that we've been rebuilding our police force and all that. So people are a bit skeptical. So I want to share that right now, I believe, there's some community members and some city staff doing a study mission to Melbourne, Australia, funded by the Knight Foundation. And the Knight Foundation was looking for a representative from our police force to go do that study trip. And I called the chief and I said, hey, can you, you want to go or can you find, you know, one of your deputies or somebody to do this? And the chief said, no, we can't spare the manpower. And that just really drove it home for me, that there's a study mission, there's, you know, no cost to the city, no cost to the police department. And the chief was unwilling to spare one officer to go on this because we're so under-resourced. And that just kind of blew me away. And that just kind of blew me away. So, to drive that home, and because we're under-resourced, that's why we're doing this social responsibility ordinance, to kind of shift that responsibility off to, you know, parent or homeowners who might be hosting, you know, kids, high school kids, lighting things off in the backyard or in front of their home. So, that's why I'm supporting that memo today. But I do have one question. In a little bit, we'll be talking about illegal street racing, and one of the things that we've done to kind of look at that or monitor that, is social media to see, you know, where's the race going to be, you know, following that, to kind of keep track of that. Couldn't we do the same thing, or are we under-resourced to do that with firework displays?
Let me just say, I think that would be a question that we'd have to work on with the city attorney's office. I mean, I know it was not an easy feat to even get the next tool that I'm glad you gave us with regards to the racer ordinance, but it would be a conversation, I think. And the racer ordinance has, you know, there's some examples of it. I don't know, I have not heard of a spectator, I've heard of spectator ordinance for racing enforcement, I have not heard one for fireworks enforcement, so that would be something-
Also, I'm not suggesting a spectator ordinance for fireworks. I'm just simply saying, like, you go on Facebook or Twitter, and somebody says, like, you know, "Go out to South San Jose, you know, by the field, by, you know, the boulder or something, and, you know, we're going to have a show tonight." Just kind of monitoring social media to kind of figure out where, and kind of stepping up our enforcement in those areas. Just, do we have the resources for kind of that monitoring of social media?
So, we're not doing social media monitoring, but we are taking the reports that we receive, and also some calls for service, and looking at where we have heightened illegal fireworks activity on a historic basis, to then determine that we have spots within the city that are more, are using illegal fireworks in a higher capacity than the other areas. So, we're using the data that we are collecting to identify those, so that if we ever have the resources, we'll be deploying those in specific areas. And that's what Captain Kim was talking about as the pilot this year, is actually identifying two of those areas, and then seeing if we can get some volunteer police officers to then target those areas. So, that's part of that pilot, and using historical data that we've been actually collecting since 2016, though.
All right.
It's not social media, but we're using other tools and data analytics to do that.
All right, well, thank you.
One follow-up, councilmember. Council, yeah, so Ryan also sent over a few of the online reporting tools about what you just mentioned. I heard they're selling fireworks at the Lucky's parking lot at so-and-so, so he does send those over to us. We only got, I think, two, and we did send a police officer out when we could, between those hours, but their response was, they went out there, they drove in the parking lot, and they didn't see anybody. So, we are actually responding to those as we get those, similar to what you're talking about.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, we have a motion, a second, and no more speakers, so let's vote. All right, on to item 8.2, report on Title 10 of the San Jose Municipal Code for the implementation of the spectator ordinance. And there will be a presentation.
Let me just tee this up before I turn it over to Lieutenant LaCap. With regards to the ordinance, I will just say, it's been six months since it's been approved by council, coming back with the report, the interim report. Although, I think you will see that some of the things that we talked about originally with regards to how we were going to utilize the enforcement and the citations, I think you'll see that, you know, we certainly have not abused our power in that area, but I believe that we've had some modest gains also, with respect to people understanding and seeing that the city of San Jose takes street racing seriously, and that has had an effect. So, with that, I will turn it over to Lieutenant LaCap.
Thank you. You'll take care of it. All right, so this was actually a perfect segue from FIRE into the spectator ordinance. So, the new city ordinance is that prohibits spectators from knowingly being present or where preparations are being made for the street races or the reckless driving exhibitions. So, with the approval of the council back in April, that took effect in July. But, in between April and July, obviously, this report's going to cover the July 4th through the September 14th, being that we needed a lot of processes to be put in place because it was a new ordinance. Therefore, there was a lot of work in the background to make sure that we had everything in place before we were actually going to enforce it. So, to start, when we talk about the processes in place, this was new for us in the fact that it was a new municipal code, so we had to make sure that we published it so that there was awareness that this new municipal code existed, as well as because it is a up to $1,000 fine, and six months of jail time, up to six months, we had to make sure that the criminal bail schedule was obviously updated through the courts, and also some of the processes of our CGIC and Odyssey with the county. More importantly, this was a new process for us going through the city attorney's office versus the district attorney's office on the workflow of the citations, arrests, and so forth. And more importantly, one of the big segments that we wanted to make sure that our officers were trained, but more importantly, the report-writing process and documentation to document what the officers were seeing out there in regards to the sideshows and the reckless driving. Department-wide, we created a training bulletin, which outlined exactly what the ordinance was, what was expected of them in regards to the enforcement, as well as the documentation. For a misdemeanor, you can easily write a citation and write notes on the back, but we felt that it was more important to make sure that we had a general offense report with that citation, to be able to document all of the different evidence that officers had collected, statements that they had made, or enview types of crimes that they were seeing. So, we went one step further and made sure that we implemented not only writing the citation, but more importantly, making sure we documented it into a police report, which would assist us moving forward with analytical data collecting. So, that was very important to us. So, in that two months between the approval and the enforcement in July, those were all the processes that were being, obviously, taking place. Training was really important, in the fact that we wanted to make sure this training bulletin was out beforehand. We did roll call training, which is at our briefings on both, all three shifts, which is days, swings, and mids, and we did that two weeks leading up to the enforcement. And what we do consistently, twice a year, we try to put on dragnet training, which is a four-hour post-studified course that we do in-house for our officers, both seasoned officers, as well as our recruits who are coming out of the police academy, to give them the tools as well, to go out and enforce the reckless driving and the street sideshows and such, that we continue to do, and we continue to train our newer officers as well. The Public Safety Service announcements in the media, we knew that that was very important and was required to make sure that we were advising the community of exactly what we were going to be doing. And so, we created an in-house video that covered the public service announcement as to the warnings and then the sights, as well as if there were egregious violations for arrest. So, that was what was really important. We also did an interview with the KPIX with Kit Doe, and that went out, obviously, before the enforcement as well. And then, the Mercury News, as soon as you approved the municipal code, they did an article in the Mercury News that went out as well. Currently, right now, in patrol, we're doing the racer enforcement, which we call the red teams, and I believe Lieutenant Anderson spoke on that in the April meeting. Right now, we deploy officers to the south and to the north. They are patrol officers that have been trained. The problem with that is, of course, it depletes our patrol units. So, depending on the evening, depending on how many calls for service, depending on the information that we may have in regards to these sideshows, those teams may or may not be deployed based on our limited resources. So, when that does occur, we are working with our mids and our swing team to make sure we can try to enforce out there. But we do know that we need to look for ways to, overtime, as the chief had mentioned earlier, that is something we are looking for, to gain some grant money to be able to do that. So, we are in the process of continuing to look for ways to increase the enforcement out there. All right, let's discuss the arrests and citations. I think there was some concern that we were going to go out when this took effect, and we were just going to cite everyone, and anybody, and someone on a sidewalk that may be walking a dog. So, in our trainings, it was very important that we expressed to the chief's concerns, as well as, and spread the word that we need to make sure it's judicially putting out there. We're going to make sure that we follow the rules, what we're trained on, and we want to make sure that, we want to send a message, but we also want to do warnings when necessary. If their citations are obviously something we need to enforce with a citation, the officers know that that option is available, and for egregious situations, of course, an arrest would be appropriate. So, we do give the officers autonomy to be able to go out and enforce it, and I would like to say that from July to September, as you see the numbers, we issued 11 citations, and mostly in the specific areas, which is Hellier, Fontanoso, Montague, and Hellier. Hellier is out in District X-Ray, so that's the southern division, and then Montague, of course, is out in the northern district, which is most likely, it's center, central. So, we did impound a few vehicles, and those were actually for the reckless driving, which is pretty common, if they're out there doing the drifting in the intersections, or revving their engines and spitting their tires, and the cars are getting out of control, then those are vehicles that we do tend to impound. We did arrest two people, but those people that were arrested were not spectator ordinance-related, they were reckless driving. So, we can say that we have not made any arrests for the spectator ordinance. So, that is one of the concerns that was out there, that we were going to maybe overly enforce this, but I can say that I'm proud of the fact that the patrol guys out there and the gals are really making sure that they have all the tools that they need to write citations. And we do give plenty of warnings, I can attest to that. So, one of the things that we learned very early on after you guys approved, the council members approved your, our spectator ordinance, we thought that for sure, you know, this was going to be something we were going to see in July, and there's still going to be a lot of sideshows. But I can say through our connections with other agencies, through officers that monitor social media, that the instant response from these racer groups were, you know, "Stay out of San Jose, we're, they're going to enforce spectators, they're going to cite, they're going to tow your cars." And they actually got the message out for us, which I think that's probably the best way to get the message out there, is obviously the people that are out there doing, the racers and the spectators. So, and as you can see, one of the posts there says, you know, "Rest in peace, sideshows for 2019," because obviously, that's one of our deterrents is to use the spectator ordinance as a tool. We're going to continue to practice and put out in place the red teams' out patrol when we can, when it's feasible. We're looking at other ways to gain the overtime, as we had spoken about, and then the chief had mentioned with all the other programs that are running in the department. And we've applied for state granting through the Office of Traffic and Safety, through our traffic enforcement unit, but unfortunately, we've been denied both in 2018 and 2019. We weren't awarding any, weren't awarded any monies for actual racer, so they don't have a category for that, but we are looking at other ways to discuss with OTS, the Office of Traffic and Safety, to come up with some ideas on how we can get some grant money for the overtime. And that's it for the presentation. Any questions?
Thank you for that presentation, and no cards, but I have Councilmember Sparza.
Yes, I'd like to thank the PD for all their hard work on this, and using very limited resources, including overtime, as the chief mentioned earlier, into really saving lives. That's how I look at it. You know, we have lost lives because of this, and I wanted to also comment that, and give some feedback from my residents, we've actually been talking about this throughout the summer with residents, to try to kind of see what they have been hearing. And along Monterey Center, Capital, and McLaughlin was like that shopping center, was a place they liked to use the donuts. We have seen a decrease in activity. So, getting the word out, having a pretty significant deterrent, has made a difference, because I don't think anybody here wants to spend our times arresting people for street racing, with the goal is to not have them do it in the first place. And so, we've seen it, and one resident actually reached out to me, she lives on Center Road, where they had weekly street races. So, this is in a neighborhood, right? This is not like way out, like when, you know, maybe when I was a kid, right? This is in a neighborhood every week, and they've only had one since we passed the ordinance. So, it has been effective. And I think that, you know, this message, it's a strong message saying that we're not going to tolerate it in our city, and that ultimately, again, we are going to save lives. I did want to ask something, so on the, for the funding component for the overtime, so there was a budget document submitted to fund that overtime. Is that, if the grants don't work, we will know in time to submit another budget document in the next fiscal cycle? Is that, will that timing work out? When will we know? I guess we're going to try everything and then see what comes back?
Yes, councilmember.
Whoa. All right, you don't know your own strength.
I'm breaking stuff. I'm sorry. Yes, councilmember, I mean, we'll definitely, this is a priority, we'll work with the city manager's office when those, when the budget cycle comes around, and that's something that we'll definitely look into.
And then, you'll reach, you let us know in time, again, as well as all the state grants, because I do appreciate that you're finding other sources to fund it, but I just, I think that if we really want to commit this to happening, we really need to commit it to the city, because it actually wasn't that much money. It was really funding the actual overtime for the detail. Is that correct?
Yes, when we put in for our funding for it, it was around 90,000, and that was to take us into the year, and it would run us two large operations, which typically includes two or three sergeants and about 20 officers, and then we would run smaller, six officers with a sergeant periodically when it was needed. And so, we did look at some of that funding, but like I said, with the Office of Traffic and Safety, they don't have funds for specific racing enforcement. What they do have is preliminary collision factor funds that can be used, but they're specific to areas, and they're specific to certain collision factors for like the zero vision, that type of stuff. So, we have been looking for ways to generate some money in that area, so, but we're still continuing to look for funding.
But, I think also, councilmember, I mean, to the point that you, I think you were making is, yes, if we cannot secure funding, we will definitely come back and request some.
Okay. And then, you know, you mentioned something, you mentioned the number of officers. You could address that in terms of staffing-wise, why you have to do that in groups. Is it something the officers do, like one officer at a time?
For like a swing shift, you know, we have that swings and midnights that overlaps during certain hours. Typically, the sideshows or the reckless driving exhibition, the speeds occur sometimes in later into the evening, which is about 10 o'clock, and it could start even earlier. So, what we tend to do is we try to use resources that have already been trained, because we have been pushing a lot of this training. And so, we do try to pull enough for like, say, six, a team of six with a supervisor, because we do know that some of these scenes can become violent, and I can attest to the fact that when I was working midnights, I was the officer that took bottles and rocks in a brand-new Tahoe, when I came to an intersection to kind of disperse the crowd, just rolling into that area, there was bottles just flying. So, I mean, it was surprising to see how it could turn volatile so quickly, although we know that. That's why we try to go out with the minimum of six officers, just so that there's coverage when necessary, because we're outnumbered sometimes, 200, 300, to a group of officers that's just out there in a patrol division. So, you know, there are situations that we need more officers.
Thank you. And I just wanted to point out, District 7 and District 10, I know Councilmember Kamis stepped away, and District 2, it's during the day. I mean, Monterey Road, they were street racing every weekend at 11:00 a.m. on a Saturday. It was kind of nuts, actually. I was surprised that people felt so free to just brazen, it was pretty brazen.
Yeah, we had taken some reports, and I was out there, and I think it was Center and South Side was really getting hit pretty hard, just in the intersection there. So, you know, we did deploy officers as we could, just to be in the area to kind of deter it, so I think, you know, that the message got out, and so that kind of dwindled off, so that did work to our advantage.
Okay, so with that, I'll move to accept the report.
All right, it's moved and seconded. No more speakers.
I'd just make one final comment from a deterrent effect, and I think Councilmember Jimenez, at one point, you had mentioned about people congregating at an In-N-Out. I believe we discussed this. So, one of my deputy chiefs at a staff meeting actually were talking about how there was a big congregation at the In-N-Out at one point, and we're going, "Okay, here we go." But actually, they left the In-N-Out and went to another city to do- But actually, they left the In-N-Out and went to another city to do what they were doing, instead of staying in San Jose. Obviously, we coordinate with the city, et cetera, but it was definitely something that the message has gotten out. I don't always say In-N-Out, because, thank you.
All right, thank you. Let's vote.
Do we count you as a yes?
All right, on to open forum. I have one card. Kayadi Takur. Hopefully, I was close. Kayadi. Going once, going twice. Mean is adjourned.